I'd like to thank Pastor Gilbert Stones for sharing one of the best ones I've heard. God of many colors and many names, Author of all life and creation, Maker of all that is good, true, and beautiful, Source of all thought and wisdom, be present in this place tonight, guide the discussions and deliberations, bring grace if there are differences, and graciousness if there are disagreements, lend your spirit to everyone here tonight. May all be heard and treated with respect, may decisions be reasoned and wise, and bless our city as we seek to do the best with the gifts we have been granted. Amen. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And next, we have a present proclamation in honor of Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Lompoc is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires kill more than 2,600 people in the United States in 2010 according to the latest research from the nonprofit National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States respond to more than 369,000 home fires, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas only one-third of Americans have both developed and practiced a home fire escape plan, almost three-quarters of Americans do not have one, however, less than half have actually practiced it. Whereas one-third of American households who have made a home fire escape plan estimated they would have at least six minutes before a fire in their home would become life-threatening, however, the time available is often less, three minutes is the magic number. Whereas the City of Lompoc's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire inju- injuries through prevention, protection, education, and whereas the City of Lompoc's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire especially in their homes. And whereas the 2012 Fire Prevention Week theme "Have Two Ways Out" effectively serves to remind us to develop and practice home fire escape plans during Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Now therefore, I John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim October 7th through the 13th as Fire Prevention Week throughout our city, and I urge citizens to practice their home fire escape plan during the Fire Prevention Week 2012 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Lompoc Fire Department. And please check your smoke detector battery.
If I might just for a couple of minutes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for this proclamation. And as we kick off Fire Prevention Week, I'd like to invite all of you to join us from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock on Saturday at Fire Station 1 on South G Street, where you'll have an opportunity to learn how to prepare "Two Ways Out." We'll have multiple displays, every single one of them interactive. It will be quite, quite an event, and we hope you'll join us, and we also hope that you'll practice fire safety all year long. This year, daylight savings is in the month of November, and we have a little saying, "Change your clock, change your battery." Thank you very much, and be fire safe.
And now we have a request from the Lompoc Museum Associates for maintenance of the Lompoc museum property and a new plan.
Hi, Mary Lynn and members of the council. Thank you for inviting us or letting us attend this session and present our plans to re-landscape the gardens. I'm going to introduce for the moment the people who will be helping me on this. Lisa Rankin, our extraordinary Director of the museum. She is handing out the PowerPoint copies of the PowerPoint presentation and of the landscape plan so you can reference your own PowerPoint presentation. Don Adams is, has been on the board, past president of the board. It's his vision and persistence that gets the ball rolling and keeps it rolling in on all our major projects. Puck Erickson did the design and has done, created more of a relationship. She's, she's here, her enthusiasm and support are keeping the project rolling, and we're happy to have her. She will describe what she has in mind, what she has come up with. A little history. When the city opened the new library in 1969, the historic Carnegie Building became the repository for the collection of Indian artifacts donated to the city by Clarence and Jenny Ruth. The city contracted with the newly-formed nonprofit called the Lompoc Museum Associates Incorporated to operate the city museum in the Carnegie Building where the Ruth collection is the centerpiece. In 2003, the Museum Associates purchased the adjacent property, the historic Christian Science Church, to provide a venue for museum programs and a meeting site for affiliated nonprofit organizations. Regular users include the Lompoc Civic Theater, which uses the space for rehearsals and performances, the Lompoc Photography Guild, the Art Society, and a group of quilters. No city funds were used to purchase, improve, or maintain the building, though it markedly enhances the mission of the museum to be a cultural center of Lompoc. How am I supposed to do that? Okay. We are here this evening to present our plan for a beautiful unified garden around the two buildings that reflects the history of the plant use in the valley from the chumash to the flower industry. The garden will expand our capacity to educate residents, including all the third graders, the city's third graders, as well as visitors, and will provide a setting for community gatherings. I see it as the first showplace for a revitalized downtown. Lisa will now continue with presenting the components of the project.
So this slide shows four photographs of the existing landscape from different angles. You can see in the upper left, that shows Stone Pine Hall situated just adjacent to the Carnegie Building, the main museum building. And then you can see, and what's real obvious from these slides, I think especially maybe the lower right one, is that right now the proper, the garden area or the lawn area is very underutilized. We've got a nice open space, but if you look at the upper right photograph, you can see, just barely see the back of that mural. Several years ago, we had an Eagle Scout who was looking for a project, and he took down the chain link fence that separated the two properties. And once that chain link fence was out of there, it became very obvious that the mural was kind of now in the middle of, in the middle of the property, out too far. And so that's one of the components of the project. So this just gives you an idea of what's there right now. You can see in front of Stone Pine, it's pretty much bare, bare little weeds, and that's all going to change. So actually, Alice, you kind of talked about the purpose was to create an educational area to talk about, we have such a long history of plant use in the Lompoc Valley, starting with the chumash Indians through the flower seed, the years of, as a flower seed capital of the world, and, and especially in the Victorian era of the building. And we also thought that it'll help, it'll be a real beautiful place in the downtown to draw visitors, both local and from out of town, give them a place to have lunch, to come, and also a, an area for community groups to meet. We envision local naturalist groups will want to meet there. It'll be close enough for the middle school, which is just a few blocks away to come over also. So that's what we see, that's what we have right now. And to talk specifically about the design, we received in 2010 a grant from the Santa Barbara Foundation to do a preliminary design, and with that grant, Puck Erickson of Arcadia Studio came up with a really nice design for us, and so I'm to ask her to talk about that.
So tell me how to use this.
Well, I didn't have to, but just this one.
There we go. There is a copy of this, I think in your packet, and the idea was to basically create three separate components to the garden that would provide an integrated experience for all visitors that would explore the different dimensions of garden and landscape history in the Lompoc Valley. And so we started with the chumash section, which is the large circle, and that is referred to as the sort of Channel Islands gathering area, and all of the plants surrounding that area will be part of the coastal chaparral communities, things such as the Channel Island oak, which is only found on the Channel Islands. It's a, it's a beautiful oak, Quercus thomantella, to provide some shade in that gathering space. And as you move down from the circle, there is a path that you see some sort of blue fragments through representing the journey of the chumash through the islands and down, down the river, and that goes into then our coastal wetlands area where you see a small deck, and this will all be ADA accessible. I think that's a really important component. And between the deck and the large circle is a small amphitheater that will be made of a native bentgrass and stone walls so that children can assemble in a very casual way with their teachers to discuss all the things that they've seen and explored in the garden. And leading from that area, we're really fortunate, of course, we have the fabulous stone pines along each street, but also there's some old olives on the site that with a little more TLC can really become another focal point of some of the agrarian history of the valley. That leads up to the existing war monument that is a perfect focal point for New Plaza that will be surrounded by low walls that will have the history of the flower industry sort of inscribed on the walls. And the plantings in that area and leading up to the corner of H and Cypress will be highlighting the different types of flowers that have really achieved notoriety through the seed industry over the years in Lompoc. And then in front of Stone Hall, because of its Spanish Revival architecture, we wanted to create what we would see as a typical drought-tolerant landscape that really harks back to the type of landscape and water use that you see around the Mission in, in Lompoc. And there'll be a large gathering area outside. It's, I think it's great that this beautiful little building is used for weddings, so it'll be a nice gathering place for people before and after such events, and very simple Mediterranean pots, and the types of cypress and agaves, the kinds of things that you would see in that Spanish colonial landscape. And of course, it wouldn't be a public garden in Lompoc without murals, and so the murals are being regrouped to kind of fit the corner by the parking area and along the alleyway. And so they'll be just a fabulous backdrop to this new garden space. And the idea was to create as much flexibility in these areas so that you could say have a class of third graders there as well as quilters eating lunch outside of Stone Pine Hall, that kind of multiple uses going on simultaneously. Are there any other, I guess we can entertain questions later. We'll move along. This, this just sums up the major garden components, the chumash garden. This is a really exciting opportunity because we'll be able to work with, you know, local volunteer groups such as the Native Plant Society in creating a demonstration garden of the, you know, fancy word, ethnobotany, the types of plants that were used by the chumash and are continued to be used today, for everything from basketry to medicinal purposes with interpretive signage, and then of course, the Victorian garden that really highlights the seed industry. And that's a nice counterpoint to the little architectural gem, which is the Carnegie Building, and then the Mediterranean garden with its Mission Revival or Spanish Revival architecture. And we'll probably have tours of that kind of thing where if people are interested in doing more drought-tolerant gardens at home, this will be a perfect opportunity for local clubs to do tours, to educate the public on that sort of thing.
Hi, I'm Don Adams, museum board member. Talk a little bit about what it's going to take to bring this into become a reality. We've, we've already made a start, a very small start with the landscape, but this preliminary budget is, is, is just that. It's based on this preliminary design, and it uses industry standards in terms of square footage and so on to arrive at some of these numbers, and Puck Erickson's firm is the one who provided these to us. It's a summarized form of the, of the overall budget that they put together for us, try to simplify it down to where we could focus on infrastructure costs, which is the first thing we have to tackle, is to get the infrastructure in place, and then follow that up with the actual planting, which is the fun part. You can see the total infrastructure, the hardscape and irrigation comes up to about $98,000. However, we're hoping that, you know, with competitive bidding for the, some, the pieces of this, when we get to that stage, and donations, hopefully we will, our actual costs are going to be much less. And these are our costs, by the way, not the city's. To the lower left, you see that we are already currently working, we've, we've gotten some grants that have been mentioned already, but we are in process of applying for a fairly significant capital grant to try to fund the hardscape and get that rolling, because with the exception of the Victorian Corner, we really need to accomplish these, the infrastructure before we can proceed. We want to do that larger part, primarily the chumash area, but actually all of that surrounding the Carnegie Building. We want to get that all done at one time. Next slide. Okay, this, there's a lot of information on this, on this chart, but it kind of shows what we've been doing, the money we've raised, and the work that we've accomplished or in the process of accomplishing. Lisa already mentioned the initial grant from Santa Barbara Foundation. This past year, the Valley, Lompoc Valley and Bloom generously donated $2,000 from their fund, annual fundraiser, the Hay Bales and Cocktails event, to help us out to get started. You can see the women's, the women's club. There's also down at the bottom, you see there in the lower left, individual donations of $450 since 2011. We'll talk about the, the actual, the walk-up, the Stone Pine Hall steps and walk-up, which is recently accomplished. But we've also had a number of in-kind donations. The one shown up there, the decorative ceramic tiles are now in place in, in the Stone Pine Hall steps were donated by NS Ceramics in Santa Barbara. Puck arranged for that, a very, very welcome addition to the project because of the value of those, some 67 handmade ceramic tiles, $1,100 themselves, so we really appreciate that. And I will, I will mention some of the, the other in-kind things having to do with those steps. One, we're going to have a couple of pictures about that later on. On the right-hand side, the work we've been doing, Lisa already mentioned the scouts and the youth corps who removed the chain link fence, and we'll get to the steps in a couple of slides. We're also very pleased that the, the folks out at Emress, which is sea light, approached the city, and they are working on removing or relocating the existing mural of the First Mission and repairing it, putting up a new frame along the perimeter against the parking lot, and they're also going to erect a second frame for us along the alleyway to accommodate the Clarence Ruth mural, which has been in storage ever since it was created a few years back. Those are the two murals that Puck mentioned, it will be the backdrop of the, of the garden. However, they are in the design stage, they haven't, but they have promised that they will do it, and they will do it at their own expense, and, which is a significant project. The new mural frames are, are going to be metal, they're not going to be wood, and so, and they're going to be very, very well engineered and, and done for us, have no cause to us. We're also needing to look at the, again, looking at the irrigation system that will be put in place for the new design. And there's going to be, there's another activity, let's move on to the next slide, which I'll talk a little bit about when we're going, hoping to complete these things. We have, just this last couple of weeks, completed the replacement of the steps to Stone Pine Hall, and the walk-up entryway is much wider and, and very nicely done. We, we went ahead with that because that's on our property, not yours, and so we're here to get your blessing to begin to make some changes to your property. The first piece of that, and we think we can accomplish this next year, is the Victorian Corner or the Victorian Garden, because it's on the, on the corner where there's not much to worry about in terms of the hardscape or changing, there's no grading or anything that has to be done. There is some work that needs to be done, but it's, it's very minor, and we think we can accomplish that before we lay on the infrastructure, which we hope to accomplish in late part of, latter part of next year. And once we get that in place, then we can really move out, and the fun part begins with plantings, and we think we're going to be able to accomplish the plants, parts of this, I think primarily through donations. And we just target that for another, give another year because projects usually take a little bit longer than you think. Then moving on to maintenance, a very important part of planning the new gardens, is that we would like to see the city continue to do their weekly maintenance, as we've shown there what we, what you typically do. With the seasonal maintenance of the plants, we would like to take that on as a museum project for, to organize community groups, come in on a volunteer basis to replace plants as, as required and to take care of them several times a year. And the overall goal for this is to lower the city's costs of maintaining this new landscape. Next slide, please. A little, just a little brief look at what we just accomplished. On the left, you see the way the, you can't make out the steps until you get to the close-up in the lower left. The old steps, as you can see, they were very crooked. They, they were raised up on the right-hand side by a cypress tree, I believe, that was, you can see the stump of it on the right-hand side of the, the old steps. That was quite a dangerous situation for people going in and out, and so we were anxious to do this right away, and that's why we applied for a small grant, and we kind of treated it as an, you know, an urgent thing to be done. Not only that, you can see from the right-hand side that, even from this picture, that it's much more attractive entryway and safer. There's going to be handrails installed, although they're not required by ADA, but, and we're going to have, eventually have a rear entrance for, for the disabled. There will be iron railings, and the, I didn't mention that the labor and the materials we're going to pay for, but the, the labor will be donated by a local metal sculpturist. So when you get a chance, stop by and take a look at that. The tape is down now, and we're actually using the new entryway. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Lisa, and she will talk a little bit about the Carnegie Building.
So this slide shows the museum building from the front as it is now, and the area I'm going to be speaking about is specifically right there to the right of this entryway, there behind that bike rack. This is, the bike rack isn't there anymore, this picture's a few years old. You can see there's one window, basement window there. There actually, if you, if you'll go to the next slide, here's a series of four photographs of the building. The top-left one is a photograph taken soon after it was constructed in 1910, 1911. And then in the upper right is, I think probably from the 1950s. And then in the lower left, in the 1960s, you can see that a, a separate entry to the basement was added in the front, and if you can see it, can you, it's just to the right of the entry there. Do you have a pointer, a laser pointer, or, is, is this have one?
Yeah, just the top one.
Oh, okay. Well, this would have been useful to have asked earlier. So you can see right here, this window, there was a matching window right here, and what in 1963, they took out the window and they dug through the, the city dug through the wall and put a glass door in there. And so then, and that was, this was when, it was still there when it became the museum, because if I zoomed in on this photograph and on the door, it does say Lompoc Museum. I thought it had been filled in before the museum started in 69, but it, it didn't. So this is probably early 70s. And then this is again today, and you can see, so they closed it off, I'm not sure exactly when, sometime I think in the 70s. So we've got this piece of, I'm not sure what grade, it's plywood, I think, and it's covering the whole. So a couple of weeks ago, the facility maintenance manager was asked, I think, to come over and investigate, and if you look at the next slide, you'll see what he found when he took that off. The glass door is still there. So here is the concrete that was poured over the old steps. There was originally wood, even before I've been here, I guess director over 10 years, a little over 10, and it's been, it was wood when I got here, and then we had skateboarders that were using it, and so they poured cement instead and, and put the metal rails to stop the skateboarding. So that's been there a little less than 10 years, I think. So this is the door, you can see the top of the door, that's where the matching window to this one would have been. And so what we're hoping to do as part of the landscape, if you would go back one slide, or actually two slides, thank you. So part of the Victorian Corner, of course, Victorians were big on symmetry, we'd like to remove this old stairwell, restore the glass window that used to be there, so that the plantings on both sides of the entry will be symmetrical, and it'll take it back to how the building looked in, when it was built in 1910, 1911. So that's kind of the thing that we're looking at right now, and I know the- So that's kind of the thing that we're looking at right now, and I know the city has been just investigating what's involved in that and how that would be done, how, how much of a job that would be. Let's see, I think, is this the end of, I think, mine? Yes. Okay. And then Alice is going to wrap it up, so.
We have this shifting show here, don't we? What are we asking of the city? Well, we want to continue the maintenance, we, our aim is that the maintenance of the property is no more. Perhaps the city would consider expanding their maintenance to include both buildings as they are kind of a cultural center, but kind of the point we want to make is we are not asking for additional city funds. We are hoping to fund this on our own. We may need, actually, we can't do anything to the building because it's your building, and we are hoping that the city will, in an in-kind or take on the project or research the project of restoring the original facade, and restoring the window, and making it look as it, as it should instead of as it does now. We need a memorandum of understanding with the city that details the responsibilities of the Lompoc Museum Associates and of the city. And that's about it. Before we start tearing things up, we need to have your approval and your support. So, thank you. Thanks for hearing us. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you for your presentation. I got wind of this at that event, which was fantastic, and we had a good conversation, and I'm very excited to see this come to us finally. But I do have a few questions. My first one is, the amphitheater, how many will that seat?
It's designed as a casual seating area for approximately 20 to 30 children, depending on the size of the children.
So it's about 10 to 15 adults, about half, approximately?
Maybe a little more than that, but yeah.
Okay. And I couldn't tell, and so maybe we can bring, actually bring up this landscape plan, where the other seating areas would be located? Or, you know, I don't know if there's...
Yeah. The idea is, in the plaza area, that the walls would be used as seat walls, and in the area in front of Stone Pine Hall, we're showing two long benches. The seating is actually something that is a little bit flexible, we're really at this preliminary, oh, sure.
Of course, you need the lights down, I think, for a door.
There we go. So the low seat wall, which surrounds the plaza, then in front of Stone Pine Hall, would be some long benches, possibly some other benches could be incorporated in there. Under the olives, we sort of left that open, but certainly more seating, even small tables and chairs could be explored in that area. And then the idea was, in terms of the circle itself, that there might be benches around the circle, but they could be movable in case people wanted to do events and move different tables and chairs into that area, even like the small tents that different groups use from time to time for displays.
Perfect. That would be my concern and my request, quite frankly, that, you know, we really ensure that this is somewhere you can go experience, and that means, you know, sitting down and, and spending some significant amount of time there. So that would be my one concern in that regard. And then I have a question for staff, and my question would be, what is the, what would be the additional cost to maintain the landscape on the other parcel?
Councilmember Costa, that number would be, it's unknown at this time?
Oh, I think Cindy, Ms. McCall, did you have a statement?
During the design phases, the preliminary design phases, Puck called me frequently, we walked the site. The maintenance that we do there now is fairly labor-intensive for very little visual impact, if you will, because the grounds are so old and in need of repair. So, once it's built and functioning, it should actually be less than what, the amount of time that we have to spend there now.
Great. And I was curious about that as well, but I'm curious about the adjoining parcel currently owned, not by the city.
We don't maintain that parcel right now, so that would be one increase, definitely.
And that's what I'm curious of, is if, you know, if the case may be that there is a cost savings on the maintenance because of their project, if then we could include the maintenance on the other parcel and break even, or even still be less than we are now.
It's certainly something that I would entertain, and we have a huge number of volunteers that would help, so it's certainly something we could work out.
Please, thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What a fantastic idea to have, I guess, a historical landscape, which is what you're talking about, very innovative, and I would love to see that, you know, you put like the name of the, the trees, you know, with a Latin name associated to it, so there is a huge educational component to it, and I think that should really help a lot for getting grants and so forth, right? Historical landscaping, that's a great idea. So, you know, besides that, I am uncertain what the next step here is. I don't know if what is needed is for the council to make a motion so it can be agendized, then the staff looks at the, you know, the monetary aspects of this, and if that's the case, I would like to make that motion, that the council goes ahead and agendizes the, the exploration of, you know, subsidizing, whether it's monetary or just in-kind, doing the MOU, all of what it's going to take to work with this project. But I think it will take basically a council direction for the staff to move that way, and when the council is ready, we'll be ready to make that motion.
I agree. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beautiful project. I love it. It's absolutely beautiful. And what an addition to our downtown area. It'll just be gorgeous. The murals, are those commissioned murals by the mural society?
Yes. Actually, when we, we met with the Emress people, and Vicky Anderson's mural is the one that is going to be moved, it is in disrepair right now, and the estimate that it has about three to five years as-is. Moving it is problematical, she knows that. Her heart is breaking because she remembers painting it during the El Nino year and being out there when it was darn cold, but she sees it's deteriorating as it is, and the Emress people are going to do their best to restore it and to stabilize it, and as they move it.
Okay, so, you're working with the mural society on, with the murals? Okay, good.
Yes.
You may have mentioned it, but I missed it. We have the old city flagpole just adjacent to the library or the museum. Is that in this plan someplace? Oh, it is, okay, then I missed it.
It's the war memorial, or the, that plaza where we talked about, between Stone Pine Hall and the museum, north of, yeah, the main entrance, actually from H Street would be the main entrance into the garden.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
And then, is there any historical significance to the building? I mean, with the state or with the government?
Do we have historic landmark status?
For the Carnegie Building?
Carnegie.
It's on the National Register of Historic Places.
Okay.
It's part of the nomination of California Carnegie's. It's also City Landmark Number One.
Okay.
So it's, yes. And, and I haven't, I'm not an expert on that, that, in terms of what that requires, but what we're doing is trying to actually take it back to 1911, you know, re-put the wall back, the...
Restore the building.
Restore the building to what it was, and it's only going to be that one spot right now, you know, that's, we're not talking about doing things to the whole building.
Right. And I think as long as you're restoring it to the original, you're probably okay, but you may want to just check with whatever society it is, and make sure that we're not doing anything that we should not be doing that would jeopardize.
And that would be Stacy Lawson, I think, would be the one who would be in charge of that, she said.
Okay. Again, just a beautiful project, and good luck, it'll be fantastic when it's finished. Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Yeah, I agree, and particularly I'm happy that you put the flagpole in the middle of the plaza, because it's kind of lost back there where it is, and for an awful lot of people, for an awful lot of years, standing in the middle of the intersection, it was very important. And if we could get the red light back on it for the police department to be able to send the patrol car back to the station, that would be good, too.
So Councilmember Martner, did you, did you have a question for, okay, sorry, Councilmember Costa.
Sorry, thank you, Marilyn. I know that if this is agendized, we'll discuss a memorandum of understanding, but I'm curious if a letter of support on behalf of the city would help in acquiring funds for the project.
I'm sure it would. That would be wonderful. It's a really good place to start. Don is working on writing grants already, and we're looking for them, and any ideas you might have of what other grants we can search for, we're working on it.
I would ask that that be part of what's discussed at the next meeting. Thank you.
Actually, I think we could probably just agree by consensus that, that a letter of support would be drafted, and I would sign it, so they could have that right away, couldn't the city attorney?
That'd be super.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's try, let's do that first, we'll do the first step, everybody willing to have a letter of support created. One, two, three, four, five, okay, got that one. Now, Councilmember Martner for the motion.
I would like to move that the city staff prepares a report in which this council, we have the opportunity to discuss and deliberate on what kind of support we can provide to the museum to carry out the project that was presented tonight. That report should have the financial, also the legal aspects, which would have to do with the MOU.
And I assume you want to, that it would include the, the beginning of the MOU, given the liberty to do that, too.
The discussion of the MOU terms and the potential financial, monetary and non-monetary aspects of it.
Good.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Costa for a discussion.
At point of inquiry, I am curious about the project concept design, if that approval would take place this evening, or if that would take place during the discussion of the agenda item.
That would be part of the agenda item.
Okay, so include that as well, thank you.
Yep, and I think that's understood. Everybody good with that, right? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of agendizing, nod your head up and down. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work on it, know you've been working on it for a while. And now the city administrator's status report.
Mr. Mayor and city council, audience and viewers, first I'd like to just speak to the recommendation to move the new business item six to the public hearing. I would respectfully request that that item be before item four.
Sure, no problem.
Then, at the regular council meeting of September 18th, you were provided an update on the status of the consultant's work regarding the LHCDC loans and monitoring analysis, and staff has since had follow-up dialogue with the consultant. And Economic Development Director, Assistant City Administrator Theresa Galavan, has been advised, the consultant's effort to finalize their work is underway, they will be spending some time at City Hall this week to complete their research of city files, and Ms. Galavan has also been advised that, by the consultant, that she could anticipate a draft report for her review as early as sometime next week. And Mr. Mayor, council, Management Services Director Brad Wilkie and finance staff are meeting this week with city departments to provide initial budget instructions for preparing departmental budget materials for fiscal year 2013, 2015 by annual budget, and all department budgets, materials will be turned in to City Administration Department December 2012. And so, the 2013-15 two-year budget process is now underway, and the initial council budget goal-setting meeting will kick off with a scheduled workshop sometime in January or February of 2013, pending council scheduling confirmation. And so while I have no further announcements, Mr. Wilkie would like to make an announcement at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, council, I'd just like to have a little bit of time. We're entering into the budget season, which will have a lot of input from many people, my staff, and many people throughout the community and throughout the city. That process will take a lot, a lot of time and effort, and I would just like to take this opportunity to say thanks to my wife for putting up with me. And it's her birthday, so I'd like to wish her a happy birthday. Thank you.
We'll get you a disc of that, so you can, you can play it for repeatedly. She's actually watching, so. Okay. Any staff requests and announcements? Okay. Okay, now that we're done with presentations, I have one announcement. Item number six will be moved to new business, and it will be under item number four. So if you're here for item number six, it will be after item number four as a public hearing item. And now we have oral communications. This is your opportunity to talk to us for five minutes on any subject. If you, if it is a subject that's on the agenda and you could stay, that would be better to have it then, but if you can't stay, talk to us now.
This item is not on the agenda, but I'm here tonight to talk about something real exciting. As you know, we've been diligently working on the renovation of the memorial building with our foundation, and we're working hard on it, we've made some accomplishments, but we still probably have about three to four years to go. But I'm here to talk about, to the council and to the community about something that's exciting that's going to happen tomorrow. The Home Depot has made a donation to the Memorial Building Foundation for materials and labor to completely renovate the kitchen. Yay, yay. If you've seen the kitchen, it's pretty bad. And so tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, we're going to have a little ceremony, honor guard, anthem, and some speakers, and Supervisor Ray will present a certificate of appreciation to Home Depot. And we want to do this because we want to really give the Home Depot some recognition. This business has not only helped the foundation for the memorial building, but they do a lot in our community, not just in terms of providing lots of sales tax to the city's general fund, but also doing projects in the community, and so we want to give them recognition. And so the public is invited, it's going to be just a short ceremony, maybe 10 or 15 minutes. I know eight o'clock is kind of tough, it is for me, anyway. And it's our opportunity to let Home Depot know how much we appreciate what they do in our community, and also to thank them for this project. And working with the manager, Tim, and Santiago, has been a real pleasure. These gentlemen are, they're as enthusiastic about the project as we are, and it's just a real pleasure to work with people in our business community that have the dedication to our community. So you are all invited, of course, and we invite the general public to come up and give them a hand. Secondly, I'd like to let you know that on October 13th, the Lompoc Hospital Foundation will be having its annual walkathon at River Park, and we encourage you to all put on your tennis shoes and walk. We're structuring it after, since this is Breast Cancer Month, we're going to have a breast cancer logo on our T-shirts, and the money that, proceeds that we get for this event will be used to purchase an MRI imaging machine for the Lompoc Hospital. This is a unit that supplements the mammogram and is a second look at the results of a mammogram, and so it's a really positive aspect that we want to add to the Lompoc Hospital. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Frank Rube, and I'm a resident of Lompoc. It has come to the attention of the veterans of Lompoc that business owners who are veterans are being denied benefits that are provided by California State Business and Profession Codes. Codes 16001.7 and 16102. These laws provide that every person who is honorably discharged from the military of the United States and who is a resident of this state may hawk, peddle and vend any goods, wares or merchandise owned by him or her except intoxicating liquor without payment of any business license fee. These laws are clearly written. There is no question about the intended meeting. Restrictive language is not -- may not be added at the local level. This is state law, state code. But the reality of this is several Lompoc veterans were told they had to be disabled. Disabled is not even a part of this law. The word is not even mentioned in the law. In addition, recently, a veteran was disqualified because his business buys auto parts from wholesale distributors and sells the parts to his customers. He then installs these parts. He was told that this service disqualifies him for the veteran's benefit. The law clearly states that he qualifies by buying and selling his own merchandise. There are no restrictions or disqualifications stated in the laws what the veteran business owners are permitted to do after they sell their merchandise. I urge the city council to take action, probably by -- I believe an ordinance should be adopted, that this injustice will never happen again to our veteran business owners. I have tried several times with the city government and also one time with the Economic Development Committee when the -- I thought this would be an excellent success subject for the Economic Development Committee to take up, but it went nowhere. So that's why I'm here. I believe the city council should take action to do something for the veteran business owners of Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, maybe at next council meeting, under the staff reports, you could give us an explanation of these two laws in California and kind of bring us up to speed on it, please? Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Lynn Whittamore. I'm a resident of Lompoc. On the 26th of last month, I was honored by the visit from a police explorer cadet. And his job was to tag my trailer and tell me it was not parked illegally on my property -- or, excuse me, on the street. I said to him, I thought this was resolved when everyone on the council was voted in two years ago, this issue got put to rest. But evidently, it's come back out because he was told by his sergeant to tag all trailers in the city of Lompoc. So I have two questions here. One is this, has it reared its ugly head again for a citizen's Lompoc? You know, I understand you have blights on the street that you want to get rid of, but don't penalize those of us that are not part of the blight. I guess that's the only question, the only statement I have. If we have extra funds to do this, I think it should be diverted to maybe repair the street in front of Beatty Park that's been in despair for three or four years. If that was my house with those barricades sitting in front of it, I would not be a happy guy. Okay? And just another reminder, every decision you guys make here is a quality issue for the life of the people in this town, whether big or small. We all deal well with the catastrophes of life. It's the little things that just nick at you that make for a bad life. And being annoyed because you have your trailer parked there is annoying. Because if I had a mobile home the same size, it would not be a question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City Administrator, could you come back to us next meeting with some information on Hang on just a sec. Got to get a note down.
Yeah, I'll give you a minute there, Mayor.
Okay. Next.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Tom Jenkins, President of the Good Samaritan Shelter. I just wanted to come back to you on an issue that was originally before you in July of this year. In July, you guys reviewed the funding for CDBG projects that were applied at the city level. And we were an agency that also applied for some of those funds. But based upon some discussion that took place that evening, we elected to defer our funding on the belief that we were eligible for home funding. And then other agencies in the city were able to get the CDBG funds for their projects. And we wanted to do that just simply because it would be better for everyone if there were funds that we were available for, we could get and other city entities could get funds they were eligible for. Unfortunately, since that time, it's been explained to us that we are not eligible for home funds and by the city, though we do disagree with the assessment that we are ineligible. Now, I came back to this council some weeks ago in the hope of discussing this issue again. However, when I got here that night, I found out there was going to be an article in the paper on home funds that may cover some issues involving Good Sam. So we elected to defer making comment then until we dealt with the issues of what was going to be in that article. And that article had to do with the belief that, well, it had to do with an HUD audit that was being done at the county level. And that HUD audit commented that several agencies in the county were not eligible for home funds because we did not qualify. But really what it came down to was there were records missing at the county level. So far, no one has indicated that we're missing any records at Good Sam. In fact, we've been asked to supply the records that were missing at the county level on a number of occasions and we have supplied those records to the fullest extent that we can -- that we've been able to. In fact, as far as we know right now, we have given them every record that they've needed. In fact, that audit has gone back as far as 1999 and we've continued to supply records that we've been asked for. Nonetheless, our real concern here was to address what was taking place in July and the funds that were applied for then. Those funds were supposed to go to two different projects. One was Mark's House, a city-owned piece of property to help renovate that property to deal with both issues of habitability. And then the other was for relocation funds to another piece of property that we are attempting to purchase, which would be used for the overflow in some of our other shelters here in town. Now, just so that you know, we were a community housing development organization back in 2005, which was the issue of the audit that was in the newspaper. And we've actually gone to several trainings. We were certified by the county. Unfortunately, the county did not have those records anymore. But at this stage, we're concerned about the funds that now apparently we no longer have eligibility to. What's been told to us is that there are no funds available for the projects that we applied for back in July, though we still believe that we are eligible for the home funds that the city did have. So what we would like to ask you to do today is to bring this matter back to the council to discuss whether or not there are any funds available for the projects that we had before you in July, whether it would be the home funds or any other funds, so that we can either address it ourselves as an agency with you and then plot for the future and decide where we need to go from here. I have some other comments about what some of those projects would do, but I'm going to defer those to Sylvia as she's a little more aware of what some of those things are. But we would ask that you take some action to bring this back to you. Thank you.
Let's let her finish.
So I am Sylvia Bernada. I'm the Executive Director of Good Samaritan Shelter and I don't have my notes. Just kidding. I'm okay. I wrote them. But my issue is really from a programmatic perspective. Mark's House costs us about $90,000 a year to operate. This is a city-owned project. We had come to the city originally and asked for about half of that to be able to help operate. We would leverage and match it with another half. So we asked for $40,000. We were only funded by this city council of $25,000. That carries us for maybe three months, three or four months. We are out trying to leverage those funds. In -- at that -- the property of Mark's House actually has three buildings. Two of them are completely unoccupable. One of them has mold halfway up the walls, all the way around the inside. The proposal that we had put forward was the ability to be able to rehab the two buildings that were not able to be occupied. And the concept is, is that one of the buildings, which is a house, could be provided for low income, provide housing and put housing back on the market in this community because we've lost a lot in the process, allow the city to do something right in the nightmare of the debacle of LH CDC, and also allow us to generate operating dollars back into Mark's House. That would generate, we believe, at least $12,000 a year. That would be huge for our organization to be able to stabilize Mark's House, which is a shelter program provided there, which is, you know, a city-owned property. So we are happy to step in as shelter providers, but we want to look to the city as a partner to be able to bring their property up to code. And so that is what we're asking for. We do believe that home funds can be used. We know that we're a CHODO. We have been told by HUD that our CHODO status is fine. Verbally, they've told the county that already. We have all of our documentation, so I don't think that that is an issue. But now the timing of going through the process of it is an issue because the longer we wait, the further we're into this fiscal year without our budget and without our funding secured. And then in addition to that, we're trying to close escrow on the other property that we put in an application for relocation funding for. We requested that through CDBG. That also could have been used by home. And now we're trying to close escrow and we don't have the relocation funds because we never got, you know, really response back on this. So this affects programmatically across the board. And just to update the council, all of our programs are full with waiting lists. Mark's House has 22 people living in 19 beds. Bridge House has 56 out of 56 beds full. We are full. And so to be able to not continue to put into these programs and the facilities that have been left haphazardly, I think is a mistake. I think that we really need to, as partners, figure out how to be able to bring that property to full fruition so we can generate dollars to be able to cover the operations that need to happen at that shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa, having now gone to another and another training session, do you see a path forward that maybe didn't exist before?
We can come back to council with some options, outlining some options that might be available. Sylvia and I did have a discussion about, you know, our first initial assessment of this and she shared some additional information regarding their status as a CHODO and that might be an option. Since then, some things have transpired that they've addressed here, but we can bring a report back with more options.
Could we perhaps have a little discussion with the HUD folks down in LA and see if they could give us a path going forward?
Yes, we'll consult with HUD and with the county. And HUD has indicated to us that before we disperse those funds, we will need to do a competitive process.
Okay. So you'll bring that back to us. Thank you. Who was first? Councilmember.
Just a comment. I'm glad we're going to be bringing this back because as we all know, Good Samaritan stepped up to the plate for us when the shelters were closing and they put themselves probably at a little bit of risk. And I think we need to do everything we can to make sure that they remain viable for that very important shelter. So I'm glad we're going to be looking into this.
And we're just going to go from the right. Councilmember Starbuck.
Just a real quick question. Santa Maria gave you home funds, correct?
Yes.
And we denied you home funds?
Yes, we have gotten funding from the City of Santa Maria in home funds as well as the county in home funds for a number of projects, one very, very similar to this one. So we have been utilizing home funds for, since we became a CHODO in 2005. Actually, prior to that, we used home funds for the purchase of two clean and sober living homes back in 1999. So we've been utilizing them for -- we have a perinatal residential program that is a transitional housing for homeless families in Santa Maria, much like Recovery Way Home here. And we utilize those funds to be able to completely rehab the front existing building while we got the state to be able to build a second building on the back and we doubled our capacity. So it was the same concept. It was an existing property and we used it to rehab it for the purposes of transitional housing for homeless families. It was the same concept.
Were you told no because of this HUD report?
No. We were told no before the HUD report came out. And I think it was really based on, I think, the definition of reading through the guidelines. But I think that in working together, I do believe that that's a process, but it has to go to HUD.
Lucky you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I sure hope that we can use HUD funds, home funds, because if not, I'm going to be very upset because I had this conversation with Ms. Gallivan. It was, first of all, I made a decision with inaccurate information. That is so disappointing. Second of all, it didn't even come back to us. And third of all, it was my understanding that those monies wouldn't be given to other projects until we confirmed that information and that's not what happened. I spoke to Ms. Gallivan. She said the rest of council may not have been on the same page with me in my understanding of that. So that's my mistake. But I never would have approved money goes to JM Park before we focus on the homeless shelters. So I'm very disappointed right now. Of course, this is coming back. We will discuss this. Thank you very much for bringing it back. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin.
I 100% concur with Councilmember Costa. It is very disappointing. I furthermore would like to establish a date by which this needs to get back to the council. The word is at a later date. I don't want that. I think it needs to be come to the council next meeting or the meeting after that. So we're talking about the October, the second meeting in October or the first week in November. Since you're already in your fiscal year and you don't have a budget, you are in a serious situation. So it has a sense of urgency and the staff should deal with it in that way. So I'm making the request that the city administrator looks into the agenda and gives us right now a potential date for when this comes back to the council.
Okay, let me ask the question. Can you guys put your heads together and tell us?
Which one?
You can, you and Teresa. And do you guys feel like it's a couple-week process or a four-week process, somewhere in that range? Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
We could come back in November, the first meeting in November with that report.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be November 6th.
Thank you. Okay, hold on just a second. Got to write all that down, too.
Hi, my name is Debbie Mogul and I wanted to ask some questions about the bus fares. I was noticing that on the agenda that you want to increase the fares and concerned about the ridership and...
Debbie, do you need to leave or can you stick around for a little bit till we get to that because we're going to have a fairly in-depth explanation?
I need to go.
Okay, then go ahead on.
Okay. I've been riding the bus for a while and so there were problems before the new changes were put in, but all you really needed to do was extend each route 10 minutes. Now there's so many problems that people have elected to walk. Plus with raising the fares, like a monthly pass used to cost 18 and now costs 40. $40 is a lot of money to come by, especially if you don't have money. And then I, people, some of the people I see or know, they just, you know, you wait on the bus, you wait on the bus, bus doesn't show. Or you have to wait 45 minutes to an hour, to an hour and a half to catch the next bus. People just have just started walking because the bus system, instead of being a service to the people, has become a nuisance. And so you're wanting to raise the fares. If you raise the fares more, you're going to have less people riding because you can't afford it. When you can go to Santa Maria or Santa Barbara and you pay a buck 25, and I know why, I thought it was something about Santa Barbara, you're raising theirs to $1.50. But you have buses that are consistent. They're on time with the -- and Lompoc is pathetic. You know, it just, you can't depend on the bus. You can, you know, walk and get there sooner. And so I would ask you to please reconsider on not raising the rate, but trying to facilitate the people better than the way it's being run right now because it's just, it was ran better before this company came in. And, you know, to have to wait an hour for a bus is ridiculous. You know, and you have some schedule, some time built in the schedule that there are no buses for an hour twice or three times a day. And so it's a case of, okay, where do I walk to catch the next bus so I can get home or get to such and such? Or, you know, you need to align your time that the buses are... Or, you know, you need to align your time that the buses are coming in to count with breeze time of when it's pulling out. Or when it's bringing people from Santa Maria, that those buses stick around and pick up the people instead of the people get in and you stand there and wait 20 minutes. The scheduling is not working, and that's the main problem. Thank you.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
When you're talking about delays, is that, is it the delays on the route or the delay at the hub between getting off one bus and getting onto the next one?
Both.
Both? Okay. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close oral communication. We'll come back to the council, and we'll move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar has the approval of the minutes from the September 18 meeting, the approval of expenditures, $1,043,000 payroll, a voucher register of $548,000, a voucher register of $420,000, credit refunds of $505 if there are any checks payable to my business or to Smitty's Towing. I hereby abstain because frankly, I didn't get them time to read them all. And an annual review of the investment policy of the City of Lompoc. Is there any item that a council member would like to have pulled? Seeing no lights, I'd accept a motion to approve. Councilmember Lingel?
I move to approve.
And a second, please.
A second.
And is there any discussion at this time on these items? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Okay, and we will be, now we'll be considering item number six for a public hearing. So, I'm going to open the public hearing, and we're going to begin item number six. And Beth?
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm Beth Flamoverby, the Human Resources Manager at the city. We're bringing to you today the imposition of the Lompoc Police Officers Association and for public hearing and consideration, the resolution. The LPOA MOU expired on June 30, 2012. Prior to the expiration of the contract on April 12, the city requested to meet with the LPOA and commence negotiations on successor contract. In early May, the chief negotiators exchanged phone calls and emails regarding the city's proposal to extend the current MOU on status quo basis. LPOA rejected via email on May 17. June 18, face-to-face negotiations began with the city making a written proposal for status quo cost reductions from the prior year for one more year through June 30, 2013. On June 29, 2012, LPOA provided a counterproposal that included a number of economic changes to the prior MOU. On July 6, 2012, the city made an oral proposal that included an increase in medical premium contributions paid by the city to be effective January 1, 2013, in the amount of $60.33 per month, and requested a reduction in the employer-paid member contribution for dispatchers as members of the miscellaneous CalPERS retirement group, causing an increase in the employee contribution rate, bringing it to 2%. On July 12, 2012, POA provided a counterproposal limited to a medical premium increase and cessation of furloughs both effective July 1, 2012. After oral discussions and emails, the city responded with a proposal dated July 18, which agreed to further increase city-paid medical premiums by the amount of $60.33 per month for one party and $120 per month for two-party or family effective January 1, 2013 to coincide with the beginning of the CalPERS health program plan year increases. However, the increase in premium contribution was limited by a sunset clause ending June 30, 2013. Also, the city requested the EPMC reduction for dispatchers and maintenance of the furlough program. After more discussion and emails, the city agreed to drop the sunset clause on the medical premium increase. The LPOA's final position was that all terms were agreeable except that the premium payments must commence July 1, 2012. The city rejected the LPOA proposal to commence the medical premium increase effective July 1, 2012, and maintained its last best and final offer as outlined in Resolution 5809 (12), and dated August 7. In response, the LPOA in writing declared impasse, and the city also agrees that it is at impasse with the LPOA having deadlock on the one remaining item in dispute. To summarize the substantive impacts of the last best final offer, during the period of July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013, sworn employees shall elect to be assigned either unpaid furlough time off to equate to 102 work hours or forfeit the ability to accrue 88 holiday hours and be assigned unpaid furlough time off to equate to 24 work hours. The combination of holiday and forfeiture of furlough time off shall be adjusted based upon the timing of imposition of this changed term and in accordance with any mutually approved side letters in order to equate to 4.865% wage reduction in the 2012-2013 fiscal year. Nonsworn employees shall be assigned unpaid furlough time off to equate to 64 work hours. All furlough hours must be taken by June 14, 2013. For nonsworn miscellaneous members of the CalPERS retirement group, effective upon adoption of this resolution, the city shall reduce its current employer-paid members' contribution from 7% to 6% of the employee contribution on behalf of the employee, while the employee will simultaneously increase their contribution to 2%. Furthermore, effective January 1, 2013, the city will increase their contribution to the healthcare program for one party by $60.33 for a total city contribution of $431.70. They will increase their two-party contribution by $120 per month for a total city contribution of $861.76. And they will increase the family rate by $120 for a total city contribution of $1,086.13. As part of the requirements for the new AB 646 legislation regarding fact-finding, the city has waited the requisite 30 days to provide the LPOA opportunity to request fact-finding. LPOA did not request fact-finding, and therefore, the impasse is moved to public hearing and possible imposition of the last best and final offer dated August 7, 2012, as summarized previously. At this point, we would move this to public hearing and then consideration for adoption.
Are there any questions at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this subject? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication and come back to the council. Are there any other questions at this time? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I found these negotiations rather frustrating. Primarily, the reason is, is that, you know, we embarked with negotiations, we spend money. We hire a negotiator who is somebody that is experienced, that is part of the same legal firm as Mr. Panone is. And they move forward and have meetings with LPOA. We get informed of the progress during closed sessions, and we discuss options, we discuss more direction, and we continue this process. At one point in time, I was certain that we were going to reach an agreement. We were advised by the negotiators on our side that there was a good chance of an agreement. Boom, no. What happened? So, I find that the process totally failed. Not only failed on the city's side, but it also failed, as I've been told, on the union's side because the union is also spending money and time in doing negotiations and hiring their legal, you know, advice. And at the end of the day, we're here finding ourselves that we have to impose. So, you know, the way I've been told the story is that we were down a path, but then something happened. And I really still to this day, I would like to hear some comment from the unions, if possible, why the path failed. What is it? What is it that made it fail? Why the negotiations didn't succeed? Let me remind you, we're all spending money and time doing this. And at the end of the day, I don't think this council likes to reach to this level in which we have to do, you know, imposing because it's a waste of time and money. We could have done this right back, you know, a long time ago. So, I, you know, we need to understand how can we conduct this in a better way so we actually succeed. And I don't have that answer. I would like to request this council, if we can get some input. I see that LPOA president is here. Could, I would like to request if he can make a comment, if that's possible.
I invited public comment, and he had an opportunity and didn't want to come and talk. I would be happy to reopen public comment if there's something he wanted to say, but I don't... I don't want to force you to say something you don't want to say because I know you have...
I succumb to peer pressure, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
And really, I came here tonight, I can sympathize with Ms., or Councilwoman Martin's concerns. I came here more as an observer to the voice that we're not going to, we waived the fact-finding process, and we're not going to oppose the imposition of the contract. Once again, where did it fail? I think it's kind of a complicated question. I know that when we began this process, and I speak basically for the membership and the concerns of the membership, there was a high level of frustration that I think is shared by probably all of you here, as well as other city employees. We are going into our fourth year of furloughs and our fifth year without any kind of raise or even a cost of living increase. And during those five years, we've watched our benefit package, the cost out of our employees' pockets. And I'm not just speaking for the POA, I'm speaking for all city employees. It goes across the board, basically rise 62% from January 2009 to what will be January 2013. So, seeing that happen, seeing the strain, I mean, a lot of the membership felt like, you know, we're going backwards. We're not even treading water. And, you know, I'm not telling you a story that hasn't been repeated over and over again by people across this country because of the economy and across this state. But I think initially, the posture of the POA, when we came into these negotiations was, let's, you know, let's get rid of furloughs. I mean, that was, and like I said, I'm speaking for the membership. When it first, the first day of this negotiations, how it started was that was kind of our invisible line drawn in the sand. And even throughout these negotiations, we wavered from that when it became extremely clear that that wasn't going to happen. The furloughs were going to continue on. So, and it kind of started, you know, that whole ball rolling and that level of frustration. So, you know, the ironic part of it is, even with all the increases in medical benefits and, you know, watching, you know, friends of mine basically, you know, lose their houses or, you know, have to make financial adjustments, pretty drastic ones, to compensate for these, you know, backward moves financially. And then, watching other guys go, leave the agency. I've been here 25 years, so I've watched this city change. I've watched this organization change. And really, really, much for the better, in a positive light. Much better, you know, physically-wise, much better equipment-wise, you know, financially, much better. But we're kind of facing a time where it's getting harder and harder to retain those. I can be a cheerleader, you know, just for so long. And what isn't happening is, with a law enforcement agency, you don't want to fall into that mode of where you have guys that have one and two years on, officers with one and two years on, then officers with 15 to 20 years on, and nothing in the middle. And how you retain that is by, you know, making things manageable for that middle group. And we're starting to lose a little bit of that middle group. We recently lost one who had about, he had about four years on, really great young officer, and he left and went to Atascadero PD. And as soon as he was, walked through the door, he got a raise. So, you know, money isn't everything, but it is something that isn't, you know, to make your life comfortable. No one gets in this job to get rich. And what the point I was going to make was, the ironic part was, if I'd come, if the city had come to the table and said, "All right, we're going to get rid of furloughs. Everything else is, we're still going to raise your insurance benefits. We're going to, you know, do this or that, but we're going to get rid of furloughs," my members probably would have signed off on this contract right then and there. And the ironic part about it is, they'd be looking at basically making what they were making four years ago. So, but to them, that would be a psychological victory. That would be a financial victory. So, I think that level of frustration was there, probably a little bit on both sides. I think Beth can attest to that. And so, we deviated from our line in the sand with a couple of different proposals that were bounced back and forth. And I think it just got to the point where maybe it was a little too, too little, too late. So, our last, last, our last offer was to make the medical benefit formula retroactive. Prior to that, for those who don't know, prior to 2009, the city had a cost-sharing formula in place for any increases in health benefits. And after 2009, it was passed that all the bargaining units, all the employee groups would be paying 100% of any increases. So, that's why the drastic jump from 2009 to now. So, like I said, I mean, I think it was a combination of things, combination of frustration, combination of, you know, I think, you know, we just, you know, had had our fill, so we realized that we weren't going to go anywhere with this at this particular point. So, our thing is, now, our position is, don't contest the imposition of the contract and, you know, do our homework and come back, and hopefully, we can start renegotiating in April. So, it's kind of a long, convoluted story for, to answer your question, but that's, you know, kind of...
Thank you.
And I'd extend, if any councilperson wants to contact me or, you know, discuss this now that we're, you know, past the negotiation part, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you at any time.
And just for the audience, during negotiations, none of us can talk to any of them, so that's why that is. But as soon as we do something, then we could, perhaps. Councilmember Lingel?
Sergeant Strange, thank you for coming up here and talking to us. We feel your frustration. I, hopefully, you see our frustration. And I'm glad you're looking forward to the next negotiations. Hopefully, you're getting your homework done. The city will get their homework done because I can tell you that, well, we have discussed, we want to bring something back to the employees during the next budget cycle. I mean, we realize the suffering that the city employees have been through, and we feel it, and we're hoping that we can do something during the next budget cycle. So, thank you for being understanding.
Yeah, and like, again, I like to stress, I mean, this is not just, you know, a POA issue. I speak for the Police Officer Association, but it is an issue citywide. And, you know, I know of city employees that work for, you know, facility maintenance and other areas who have come to me and voiced, you know, concerns because they have mortgages to pay and, you know, when they, when they go to the state, they actually qualify for aid. So, based on the amount of money they're making and the furloughs and the amount of dependents they have in their household. So, it is, it is, it is a shared frustration, and we realize that. And like I said, it's not the first time I've sat at the negotiation table. And I can tell you right now, Lompoc Police Department is an excellent police department, excellent police department with really, really good leadership. And, you know, we're trying our best, so hopefully, we can, in April, come back to the table and come to some sort of compromise.
Thank you. And just on a good news side, go look at our sales tax numbers, and you should start smiling a little more. Because first quarter, we were up 18.9%, so things are coming.
Oh, and I agree. I think things are coming. Oh, and I agree, I think things are coming. And on another good, positive note, the chief took a tour of the new Allen Hancock Law Enforcement Training Facility today, and we're anticipating that'll, you know, reinvigorate the economy as well. So, I mean, you know, I see things, you know, bright on the future, both within our agency and within our city, so hopefully things will change.
Well, we appreciate you guys hanging in there and keeping doing a good job, and you know, we're all, we're all in it with you. Okay, any other discussion? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Okay. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And I'll close that hearing and we'll go to the next one, which is. Okay, now we're going to open the public hearing for the Short Range Financial Plan for the Transit System to Meet TDA Requirement for Fairbox Recovery. And Richard, would you be kind enough to go back a little ways and talk about how this evolved and SB CAG and so on?
Sure. Requirement. In 2010, SB CAG did a Transportation Development Act Audit. This takes place about every three years, and in the past, all the audits that have been done said that the city did not have to meet a fare box ratio under some guidelines that they had. The last time they did it in 2010, the auditors found that we now did have to meet our fare box recovery limit, which is 20%. Upon that happening, we had some meetings with SB CAG, and they agreed to lower our fare box percentage from 20% to 15%, and they have the authority to do that under the Transportation Development Act. So they did that, and they did it for the period from 2011-12 to 2013-14. So where we're at now is, we've done the first year of that, 2011-12, we took some steps a year prior to that, our fare box is getting better, but from what we see, it can't make that jump to 20%. So what we're looking at is, we're looking at presentations to come to the 15 and maybe some ways that we could get 20, but those are harder steps to take. In 2010-11, right when the council passed the new changes, that we dropped some routes, we dropped the last hour of service at night, and we quit interlining routes so that you could stay on one bus and go through all the routes in the city, which wasn't effective or efficient. And then we also rerouted a Route 5 to serve the wine ghetto. In 2010-11, like I said, our fare box is 9.8. After we did those changes, this last year is 14.3. So we did a pretty good jump there. We also had a major change in our contractor, and that saved us quite a bit of money and continues to save us money on a day-to-day basis. The slide before you now is our current route structure. And our recommendation is to follow on with the background that I just gave, is to receive this presentation to meet fare box recovery requirements, approve the staff recommendations contained in the report for 12-13, and authorize myself to implement those recommendations and other operational changes to the coal system, or if you please, provide alternate directions to staff. This is the, and I'll bounce back and forth a little bit here. First recommendation is to eliminate Route 5, which is this yellow route that comes down each street, goes down Cypress to the hospital, wine ghetto, then comes back and follows back to Mission Plaza. The change would be that Route 1, we eliminate the yellow route, Route 5, and Route 1 makes this jog over to the hospital on the wine ghetto and then goes back on the route. This would add approximately eight minutes to the Route 1 schedule. We've done a number of surveys, and what we found was, there were no pickups along this route of Route 5. So we're going to be taking our most effective route and picking up our largest areas where we board and deboard riders, and most likely will increase our passenger ride count on the red line. The next, this slide shows where we were in 11-12. This is 14.3% fare box. With the change, we go down a bit, but also up here, we have an operating increase of about 3.9% per year. Over the next three years, we'll increase about 6%, just roughly 2% per year for our contractor costs. That's on a five-year contract that we have with Store Transportation. And of course, we have increases in fuel costs and maintenance and supplies and that type of thing. So we end up going down. If we just eliminate Route 5, we go down for a number of years, and this is with no increases in fixed fares or dial ride fares or anything else. We left them static so that we could show that, you know, there would be a decrease even with eliminating Route 5. There is a change, we save approximately $130,000 during the first 12 months of the elimination of Route 5. Like I said, because we have the increase up in the operating cost, that really doesn't help us a whole bunch, except this would be down in the 11-12% rate if we did not eliminate that route. The next recommendation would be eliminate Route 5 and increase our fare revenue. We have a fare, proposed bus fares here that show our comparison, where we intend to go from where we are now to where we intend to go, comparison with MTD in Santa Barbara, San Andres Valley Transit, and Smat in Santa Maria. As you can see, both MTD and San Andres Valley Transit are above us now in a number of categories as you go down the line. There are no comparisons under the county routes because these three groups don't operate any county services. We do county route service on behalf of Santa Barbara County and serve the Village, Mesa Oaks, and Mission Hills. The fares that we proposed, the current fares have not increased since 2008. Operating costs have continued to increase, our fuel prices, as well as I've talked about our service contract. The fare increase proposal before you provides an estimate of fare increase that would bring our recovery rate to approximately 15.3% next year, 16.1, and it starts to go down again, also because we have increasing operating cost. So, you know, fare bump does not go on forever and ever. It's like anything else, the cost goes up and you have to balance that cost with some kind of revenue injection. The other thing we can do is utilize Measure A funds to supplement fare box. If you look in these lines, it tells us how much Measure A money we would have to inject if we did both Route 5 and the proposed fare increases. There's no injection of Measure A funds either in 12-13 or 13-14, 14-15, until we get to 15-16, and then we have to inject about $1,000 to get to 15%. If you want to shoot for the 20%, then it goes up drastically, $81,000, 68, 58, and it starts to climb again as our operating costs go up. We will meet with SB CAG at a point where we evaluate our service and the fare box, and at that time, if we've taken all the steps we can possibly take, and those are reasonable steps to take, SB CAG can allow us to continue with a 15% fare box recovery rate. That's their prerogative under the Transportation Development Act. Like I said, the proposed elimination of Route 5 would save about $130,000 in the first 12 months. Fare increases are expected to inject about $41,000 in new fares in the first 12 months following implementation. And just in case fares don't come to the realization that we hope they do, Measure A funds would be, need to be used as backfill or backup to bring us up to that 15%. If we don't hit the 15% fare box mark, then we lose TDA funds, dollar for dollar of what we need to make up in actual fare cost. If we use Measure A funds to backfill and reach the 15% fare box, that would normally come out as streets and roads maintenance. We backfill that with TDA funds because the TDA funds we don't use then can be used for streets and roads. It's a wash, it's dollar-for-dollar exchange, so there's really no loss to any of our transit funding or any of streets and roads maintenance funding. In conclusion, the continued changes to the transit system are necessary to achieve forward movement towards the 20% fare box. Future changes will also include additional marketing to bring more ridership to the service, and continued evaluation of productive and non-productive routes, and future fare adjustments may be necessary to keep up with fare box ratios. Available for any questions.
Richard, how long ago was a monthly pass $18? Can you put the slide back for the rates, the fare box rates, please? There you go. That's, no, you had it, the other one. That's it. Hold right there.
Well, the current rate for seniors is 15, the pass rate, the current rate for a regular student is 30, and the regular rate is 40. It's been, off the top of my head, I'd say 2003 or '04 maybe, when it was $18.
It's been quite a long time. Okay. I'm just looking at some questions that the one lady asked that wasn't able to stay. I think the, one of the things that we were looking at when we moved to this supplier was an on-time improvement, and there were some route changes to accomplish that.
Right.
How has that fared for us with regard to fixed route, not to ADA?
Right. The fixed route, the year we did the Short Range Transit Plan, which was 2000, March of 2011, we did a route study, and they actually counted the people who got on and off at every single stop, and they timed every single stop, every single route. Our on-time performance at that point was 59%, and today we're running between 90 and 96%. So our on-time performance has changed drastically, mostly since we changed the route schedule in February of this year. And yes, they are longer, the schedule used to run on half-hour headways, now some routes run 45 minutes, some routes run an hour, but they are almost always on time. And that was the comment we had from people out in the, actually writing the routes, that if the, the schedule said you need to be at this stop at 10:42, we get there at 10:42 and the bus isn't there for a half hour. Oh, we'd rather have it run longer and actually be there at 10:42, give or take three or four minutes, than, you know, have it, have to be there and wait and wait and wait.
And what's the, they all go into the hub at Mission Plaza, what's the wait time between, say, transferring from one to another?
That would depend on which bus you're transferring to.
What's the range?
The range is anywhere from 45 to an hour and a half, probably. Because you could be wanting to get on a bus that's running 45-minute headways, and you're on a bus that runs an hour headways, and you miss it, so you're waiting that period until that bus comes back around again.
And it, just pure ignorance out of, how many, each route has a bus making the loop, or there's more than one?
Right.
It has a bus, okay.
We used to have interlined routes where you got on Route 1, and it turned into Route 2, and it turned into Route 3, and you could actually traverse the whole city and never get off the bus. The problem with that is, if you have a slowdown or multiple wheelchair boardings and deboardings, then that route gets behind, and then it's behind the whole rest of the day.
And it gets further around with every, with every slowdown.
More and more behind every time it goes around.
Okay. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Richard, I'm a fan of you, you know that, I think. But I've been hearing a lot of complaints, and we heard some today, and I know you tell us that the buses are on time. The timing, are these our people doing the timing? Are they independent people? Who's doing the timing on these routes when we say they're 96% on time?
The timing at the Short Range Transit Plan was done by a private consultant. The timing we do now is mostly done by the actual contractor with verification. I go out every month and verify times. We have, the drivers have what they call time stops, not at every single stop, but a number of stops, they have the stops on a route, they actually have to call in and say, "I'm at a certain location, it's 10:42." And they have to wait until that time. If they're a minute early, they wait a minute before they leave that stop again. So that keeps them on time.
Okay.
So I verify those.
Okay. Because I was thinking, maybe you could have something like a secret shopper, a secret bus rider to verify it, but I mean, you know, something.
And we do have people out there that do that on their own.
Okay, good. I mean, I'd like, I'd like to see something. Do we have a rider satisfaction survey that we do?
We haven't since last year.
Okay. I'd like to see us consider implementing one and having the surveys come back to City Hall, actually not dropped off with the driver. Do we have cameras on the buses?
Yes.
And, you know, I don't know how truthful this is or how accurate it is, but I've heard people telling me that some of the drivers will allow their friends and relatives that to ride free, just come on on, you know, and naturally that affects our rates. So I mean.
Right, we can now catch that.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like to see that, because I'd like to be able to tell people that's not happening. Okay, so look at that.
I can't guarantee it's not happening ever, but we can verify those. We'd have to watch every single boarding, and we don't do that.
Okay. The other thing is, you know, we're, we're still a somewhat depressed city. I'd hate to see us be going for this 20% fare box when we're, when we can settle on the 15%. If we can, if we're allowed to keep the 15%, I mean, I'd really not want us to increase fares. Eliminating Route 5, it looks like eliminating Route 5 and going through Route 1, it looks like we'll be able to accomplish it. But I'd like to see us not increase fares. As a matter of fact, you know, the old saying, "We'll make it up on volume." There may be something to that. I mean, what if we, at least for a short period of time, took that monthly fee of $40, reduce it to 25 or something like that, I don't know, for a short period of time, and just see and advertise it really well so people know, and see what happens? I mean, we see these buses going around, often they're pretty empty. If we could increase our ridership, it would make a big difference. So consider one or two months just lowering the rate, the monthly rate by a certain amount. I mean, it's, it might work, it might not. And then the dial ride, I had complaints. I had complaints today that the dial-a-ride, which is a handicapped bus-
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There are several of the complexes where they're unable to go into the complex to pick the person up because they can't turn around. Is that right?
Right. And we, normally, we try not to go onto private property because of the liability issues.
Okay.
So it's more than that.
Check with our city attorney, see if we need to do that, because I'm just wondering do we have a liability, maybe we don't have a liability with the handicapped individual having to come out to the curb. I don't, I don't know. But it seems like, you know, we've, we've got these handicap buses, we have the dial-a-ride, and yet this person has to struggle to get from their front door out to the street. I mean, it seems like an issue that we, that we have, if we could address it, I'd love to see that being addressed. And then the delays, you say that, they're not. We're pretty much 96 percent, 97 percent on time. Okay. Well, I'd like to see us get a rider satisfaction survey. I'd like to see us have something like a secret rider that reports back to you, rather than just a contractor or whomever doing the time, the delays, the timing on that. And then the last question I have, I'm assuming we do, but do we have a bus stopping at the New Community Center, Dick Dewey's Community Center?
No.
We don't? Okay. I think that's an issue.
Oh, the seniors' center?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
We do, okay.
That's on a fixed route, and we also-
And it stops in front of this community center, drives in there?
Right. Yeah. We don't go under the cover because it's a little low.
I was told that it was like a block away or something like that, but it goes actually onto the process.
No, we go right to it.
Okay. And I'm still a fan of yours.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to concur with Councilmember Lingle regarding increasing the fare. To me, a sure way to kill a service is to increase the fare. I mean, you know, we have two things going on. We hear a lot that the buses are empty, we really have very little volume, and now, if we go and increase the fare, we're going to further reduce the volume. It's inevitable. So you're kind of committing suicide, really. I mean, there has to be something else that needs to be done, and the approach, in my mind, is to increase the volume, to get that bus to be utilized more, not to increase the rate. Because if you increase the rate, you're going to decrease the volume. We're talking about, you know, the majority of the users of this service are individuals that they watch every penny they have. You're gonna, you're gonna get them out. They're gonna be out of the market. They're gonna walk. We just heard it. That's, they have no other choice. When you go and calculate the expected revenue by increasing the fare, are you assuming that you're gonna have the same volume?
No, we're assuming we're gonna have a loss of volume.
And what is that loss of volume?
Probably anywhere between 5 and 15 percent.
So you're assuming that you're gonna reduce the volume. So now, I hear a lot of complaints, there's only like two people in the bus. So, okay, so if you're gonna reduce it by 5 or 10 percent, you might end up having buses driving around town that are gonna be empty. And that is a waste of money. That is a waste of money. So I, we need to come up with some other proposal that will increase the volume. One idea that was thrown out on the table is, you know, try to reduce the fare and see what happens for two months, and see if you can actually compensate it by having more people going on the bus. I think that experiment needs to be done. I'd love to be proven wrong, but from here, all I can see is that the program is just gonna slowly die, because it's gonna become too expensive for the individuals that are in need of this service, and therefore, the service is just gonna die.
Councilmember Costum?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I don't wanna, definitely don't want to beat a dead horse here. That was sort of the comment I made, and I make to a lot of departments, is about marketing, and really how that's the key to success for any business, so it makes sense that it would be the key to success for any service as well, provided by the city. So, and I know that that's part of the plan, I was really, I was really happy to see that in there, but I'm curious, what is the deadline to have the 15 percent fare box?
We have to have it every year now.
Starting?
Well, for the current fiscal year and next fiscal year, and we have to do things that demonstrate to SBK that we're trying to meet that and work towards the 20 percent. If we didn't do anything, and it just stayed down at 9 percent or something like that, then they're just, you know, they're just gonna take TDA money away, and then it's like, kill me here or kill me there.
Understood. I think, so, I'm sorry, can I get an actual date of it? When is the deadline that we'd have to report that we have the 15 percent?
We have to do it now. Yeah. We had to, we did it, you know, last year was the first year, this year is the second year, and next year is the third year.
Okay.
We have to do it consistently.
Can I make a comment? Yeah, actually, the 15 percent started fiscal year 2011, '12. The difference is, that's a grace period. They gave us one year to try to meet the goal. So in '12, '13 is the actual, if we don't meet the 15 percent by July of '13, then we'll get the penalty.
So, okay, so July of '13?
Not this year.
Of 2013? Right, of fiscal year. Makes sense.
So we're halfway through the current fiscal year.
So I would disagree with the other council members. I don't think we should lower the rate. I think that keeping it where it is is something that I'm comfortable with, raising it is something that I'm not. But if we can, by a trial basis, figure out, I think changing the route, I agree, that's fine. I think also, looking into the measure A funds, if needed, that's, I'm okay with that as well. But on a trial basis, figuring out, you know, again, ways to increase that volume, and then when, you know, if and when we're backed into a corner, and the only option we have left is raising the fare, I would then say at that point, it would be something that we would implement. But for the meantime, I would like us to try a different strategy first, and then, you know, sort of understand that part of the satisfactory completion of work for your department right now is really going to be focused on, you know, increasing that volume. Let's put all of our heads together, let's, you know, maybe talk to the community, whoever we need to talk to, and figure out how to do that. I think that it's actually easy, not easy, that was actually the wrong word, easier now than it may have been in the past, only because there is also this new wave of thinking in regards to, you know, being green, and that means, you know, everybody traveling together, and so maybe, you know, using that as an idea, or just being as innovative as you can in regards to how to get people on these buses and how to utilize them. So that's what I would like to see first, before we actually have to institute a raising of the fare. I hope that makes sense to everyone. Thank you.
So maybe here's an idea. Guys at the back table, what's our morning peak period? From when to when?
It's usually school kids first thing in the morning.
From?
Seven to 8:30.
Okay, so 7:00 to 9:00 covers it. And what's our afternoon peak period?
Around 3 o'clock.
3:00 to 4:00?
Yeah.
Maybe what we could contemplate would be raising the rates, but then having a midday period where we either maintain the current rate, or we actually have a lower rate, so not anybody on the bus anyway, and that would benefit the people we'd like to benefit and solve kind of our problem. If we had a, you know, a 9:00 to 3:00 period where the boarding rate was either the same as it is now, or maybe slightly lower, and we might entice those people that aren't riding because of financial conditions to come and ride, and those people that are gonna ride anyway could pay the extra 25 cents, and we, see if we can get the best of both worlds. How complicated would it be to have time-sensitive pricing?
I couldn't answer that off the top of my head.
Okay. Two big guys at the back table.
I don't, I don't know of any system that's, that's doing that. It sounds pretty complicated.
I just want to hear you say you can do anything, that's all I want to hear.
I mean, we could do it. I'm sure it could be done. It's just that, you know, if you sell fares, you know, people that ride the bus a lot, the most economical thing is to buy the monthly pass. So if you're varying the fare, I guess that would make the monthly pass more attractive.
There is that, isn't there?
But I don't know that we actually sell a lot of monthly passes. I think we might sell a lot of student passes mostly, but not senior and-
So I think our goal maybe is to, the captive audience that's gonna ride anyway to get our extra quarter out of them, and then the ones we're trying to entice back to make a better deal somehow. Or maybe we sell a pass that's only good from 9:00 to 3:00, and it's a lower-priced pass. I don't know, you guys are the geniuses, let you figure that out. Councilmember Starbuck?
Mr. Fernbrügg, just a couple of things. I was reviewing some old documentation known as our short-range transit plan from June 2011, and this was where we started Route 5. And some of the things that we listed here is it will increase our operating efficiency. This has proven not to be true, then.
Right.
It says it will improve on-time performance. Now, that must have worked. And then obviously, it will increase service coverage and underservice areas of the community, which it didn't, because nobody gets on the bus in those areas anyhow. So what's happening here is, the only thing that it's done was improve on-time performance. I'm just curious about that, because I like to study the little bit of these routes here. The other thing that I'm intrigued with is, if we go to the short-range financial plan here, and we look at page 19 of 34, "The city received feedback from Colt riders through onboard passenger surveys conducted during February of 2011." Now, this is where the customer feedback, and it goes in here, and it says, "53 percent of fixed route general in-city passengers surveyed, and 56 slash 70 percent, depending on in-city or outside-city, on-demand response passenger surveys indicated they would be willing to pay more." Now, this was back in February of 2011, and I'm just curious, how many surveys, and are we using that data to figure this pay increase?
Well, this, this was part of it. This was part of the information, because this was done by a private consultant, not by in-house staff favoring one thing or another, or by a contractor trying to make themselves look good. This was an independent survey done for the short-range transit plan. And so, you know, that does figure into what we would consider, if that many people at that time would say that they'd pay more for the service, then that gives us some backup that-
Raise the fares.
There are a number of people that would be able to and willing to pay a larger fare.
Okay. So, any-
Councilmember Bartner?
I guess, I'm a little confused with that. If there was a survey that there were individuals that are saying, "I'm willing to pay more," are they taking the bus now?
Well, we don't have individual names, so we can't really tell. But I think that, you know, in an overall picture of the service, we have lost probably our biggest group of riders that we've lost numbers in are the school-aged children. And I can only figure that that's part of the economy right now, is, you know, if you're paying $1.25 each way, and that's $2.50 a day, that's, you know, you add that up for a month, it could be a hit out of the pocket for somebody that's lost wages. And so we've seen a decrease in school-aged children.
Okay, so, so I guess they were willing to pay more if they were to have a more efficient system, on-time, that kind of thing, right? I mean, why would you want to pay more?
Well, yeah.
To just, right? I mean, so, so the question is, has the efficiency of the system improved, such as that that increase in rate is justified?
Yeah. At that time, the comments from the people wanting efficiency were, were we gonna be at that stop when we had advertised we would be at that stop in the schedule?
Right, right. And has that improved?
And now we are.
Okay. Although we heard, although we just heard only one public comment, and it's difficult to make a decision based on only one public comment, so we have to rely on the surveys. The, so now, I think, hearing the council's discussion, we, we see that there isn't really, you know, a big drive to increase the fare. There is not too much of a drive to decrease the fare. The idea of doing something complicated, I think, at the end of the day, is just gonna increase the operational cost of this service, so it's gonna make it even less financially viable if we get complicated with, you know, if you're riding between 8:00 and 9:00, you get one fare, if you're riding between some other time. I mean, that gets just really complicated, and inevitably, it's gonna increase the operating cost. And we don't want to go there, right? We don't want to increase the operating cost. So what would be the effect if we keep the rates the same for the next six months?
Let's see, if we go back to the elimination of Route 5, what we figured is, our fare box rate goes down to 13.5 and then continues to drop if we don't do anything about our revenue fare box.
So we're short 1.1 percent? Right?
Yeah, we actually would be, if you use measure A to transfer, it'd be about $15,000 this year, $24,000 the next, and so on, that we'd have to transfer out of measure A and then transfer TDA funds into streets, which is just, like I said, a balance, just a shift.
I understand that. So the only way that the compensation or the, you know, the reaching the desirable, you know, balance is going to be by increasing the volume. I don't see it any other way where we can go. So what are we gonna do about increasing the volume? Marketing?
Yeah, marketing is the main factor that we would work on. You know, if the people aren't gonna ride for other reasons, if they don't have the money to ride, then you're probably not gonna do much with that. But we go back and market the service and get it out there and really push it, so that everybody knows about it, and that it's available, and it's on time, and those types of things.
And you're saying that your largest customer is students, you know, school-aged children?
That was our largest volume customer.
That is your largest volume customer? Have we contacted the school district?
No.
Well, maybe we need to start there, and talk to them about increasing, you know, help us increase the volume. They are the customer, it appears to be correct. I would think that we need to contact the school system, and maybe go to every classroom and say, "This service is offered." I happen to teach at Allen Hancock, and I have a lab, and yes, there is a little flyer there that says, "Use the Colt system. You can go in the evenings, it's safe." There is some level of marketing going on to Allen Hancock, the college. I think we need to put flyers in every single school in town, then, to try to increase the volume.
Kevin, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I just was waiting for a break in the conversation. So, kind of my feedback on this is, yes, no matter what we do, we should look at marketing, and we should, we should do that no matter what your decision is, because that's where our customers are, and we need to reach out to our customers. Look, I think the question before you tonight is, what do you want to do about this fiscal year? Even if we did the best marketing possible, we're six months into the fiscal year already, likely wouldn't have a lot of impact this fiscal year on marketing. So you're left with either go forward with the fare increase that is proposed, or subsidize transit further by using the measure A funds. Those are really the only two options for this fiscal year.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'm not gonna be as complicated as the mayor is. But if the segment of the population that we've lost is the school-aged children, and you say it's a buck and a half each way, let's get those kids back on the bus by giving them a 50-cent fare. They're gone anyway, so this is new money coming in. Okay? So a buck a day for the school-aged child as opposed to $3 a day, we may get them back on the buses. It's money that we don't have right now, and you could, I don't know, pick an age, you know, I know it's gonna be difficult, you know, we, I guess you go by the school, if they're in a certain school, because you can't ask for an ID or something like that. But get the school-aged kids back on the buses. That would be able to increase our, our box rate. And I agree with Kevin that we need to do something right now. Eliminating Route 5, I think that's probably, as Tony Durham would say, it's almost a no-brainer at this time. Did you hear that, Tony? But I'm still- But I'm still questioning whether we should increase the fares right now, and I understand we're sort of under the gun right now. But I'd like to, I don't want to increase the fares, so I'd like to see us get those kids back on the buses at some reduced rate, and see if that's enough to not have to increase the fares. That'd be my recommendation, is that we eliminate Route 5, try to get the kids back on the bus by some ridiculously low fare, and not increase the fees for the next couple of months, and try it out. I mean, it's a trial basis for several months.
Okay, Brad. You're the numbers guy. So if you reduced the fare by one-third, how many more riders would you have to get as a result of that? What would be the factor?
A train leaves LA.
I'm a retail guy, and, you know, this is, we've had this discussion about pricing before, and I know what the answer is.
If we're just talking about the one segment of the ridership, it would probably have something to do with...
Which is approximately 50% of the riders.
Like Councilmember Martin was talking about, the volume of riders that are, that make up that block of riders. So if they're 50% of the whole entire ridership, then one-third reduction would, I'd have to think about it for a little bit. But, and that's what I mean, is if it's, if they're 50% of the whole entire ridership, it may be different than if they're 20% or 75%. So it's, that would have to probably, we'd have to look at some of the numbers that Richard has from some of the surveys.
Seems to me they were in the 50% range. Anybody remember for sure? I'd have to go back.
If that's half, then the $200,000 that they're getting, $100,000 of that is coming from student fares. So if you're reducing the fare by a third, you'd have to, you'd be getting $66,000 for that 50%. So however many riders you're getting, you'd have to get 33% more just to break even.
Just to be even, yeah. The, you know, in retail, we look at discounts, and when you get into that kind of number, it doesn't generally work too well. Councilmember Starbuck.
I guess one of the biggest questions, why would kids quit riding the bus? Because we probably weren't getting them to school on time? I do remember a call I got from a parent, and I kind of related to you, about they were sitting two blocks away from the school on the bus, and the bell would go off. So they were consistently late. As a parent, you can't allow your kid to be consistently late, so you have to come up with an alternate mode. I know that Cabrillo was a school that was a choice, had to find your own way. Something may have fell through the cracks there on this, I'm guessing. You know, I guess the biggest question is, you know, gas is going up, there's the operating costs going up, we're going to delete Route 5, we're bouncing this thing back and forth. If we approve this short-range transit plan, how much time do you need to gather the data to tell us if we're going the right direction or not?
Probably six months.
And that's what we have left, basically, in this fiscal year? I'm almost willing to just do that, and then be ready at the six months to find out how this panned out. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I hate to ask you off the top of your head, and I think it's in here somewhere. What's the total ridership?
It's, I want to say between 150 and 200,000.
Thank you. So then, my question would be, you know, the real question here is, how many more people do we need to ride? At what rate do we need to increase the volume to meet the fare box? And then, that's where I would say, if it's 10, or 20, or 30%, we know that in the next six months, it's not going to happen, right? But if maybe it's in between 1% to 5%, maybe it's something we can discuss. Has it been looked at in that manner?
Well, without knowing who's going to ride, at what level of fare, we don't really know. You know, it would depend on if you brought back the lower-discounted riders, or the riders that pay closer to full fare.
Is the fare schedule so wide?
That makes it difficult. I understand. So, I guess I would, I know that you still have a question, Councilmember Martin, but I would like to make a motion.
We haven't had public comment yet.
Oh, darn.
Councilmember Martin.
Well, the confusion, I'm still very confused. When you try, when you propose these rate increases, you're accounting for a certain decrease in volume, and you said it was 5% to 10%. So, if you know that, you should be able to tell us what is the volume that we need to increase to keep the rate the same. I mean, just do it one way to the other way. Yes, I mean, you're answering the question only one way, increasing the rates. You need to answer the question, we keep the rates the same, what volume do we need to keep, you know, to make the numbers to that drop box? So you have to solve the problem differently. I mean, it's frustrating that we always go back to, let's put the burden in increasing the rates. There's got to be another way in which we say, if we keep the rates the same, we need this volume increase. Because you do that calculation when you are assuming that you're going to lose the volume, and you're expecting that with this rate, you're losing this amount of volume. You've got to be able to do the calculation the other way. And I would like to hear that number.
You would need to increase the ridership by about 13,000 riders.
And what is that percent of the present today?
It's about 9%, roughly. I think you're low, though.
About 7%.
Okay, so, so, either way, I mean, you're assuming that you can, you know, if you increase the rate, you're going to lose 5% to 10%. Now, if we keep the rates the same, we would need to compensate by an increase of 7%. This should be achievable in a year. I mean, if you're saying that that's what's going to happen, that you can afford to lose 5% to 10% of the volume by increasing the rates, you should be able, well, I got to be able to increase the volume and keep the rates the same, but it's the same percentage, either way.
Okay, let me ask the question a different way. What's the amount of fare-box dollar increase you need to get? I'm sorry, I know it's in one of these charts.
It's right there, it's about $16,000 the first year.
Okay, so that's 10% of the current fare revenue of 162,000 for the fixed route, and 10% of the ridership would be 17,657.6 new riders, or roughly 1,100 riders a month, 1,200 riders a month, something like that. So it's almost exactly a 10% increase, because the fair, current fare revenue for fixed route is 162,000, and the fixed route ridership is 176,000. So if we needed to get 10%, which would be 16,000, then we need to, if we wanted to get the same volume, we'd have to pick it up in roughly the same ridership. So, 1,200 a month, something like that. Is that about right? Okay. Okay, let's take a break, and we'll go to oral communication. This is a public hearing. I'm sorry, public comment, this is a public hearing, so who would like to talk to us on this subject? That was unanimous, nobody? Okay. Oh, there we go. Come on, you guys, you know, if you snooze, you lose.
Frank Krueg. I just had an idea. I was wondering if we, if, considering Mr. Lingle's comment about schoolkids at a dollar a day, if we couldn't apply for a grant to cover the excess cost. I mean, it sounds like that's, getting kids to school would be a good program for somebody to fund. Possibility.
How do you do? Steve Storman, resident of Lumpok. First, it seems like we've been bit by agenda procrastination again. Seems like every single time we have a meeting and something comes up, it's a crisis to the mode of, you have to check your pants afterwards. You know, last time it was the caper, this time it's the bus. We really have to get out of this. I've taken the bus in every other city I've lived in. I've never taken Colt, so I can't speak as to the experience of it. I would say it's crazy to compare our fares to those of MTD in Santa Barbara. You know, you can get from Santa Barbara to Galida, you know, they have routes of 25 miles round trip that are, you know, $1.75, and we're going, what, three to five miles? It just seems like, you know, we've got our transit area all the way in a really low, you know, no-population-density area, and kind of low-shopping volume as well, and, you know, you have to go all the way around the entire city to find the people who want to get on the bus to take them places. It's just backwards from every other place that I've lived. So I have a couple of questions. Well, I have one question mainly. I want to know if other cities use, other cities under SB CAG use Measure A backfill to meet the fare-box requirements. Would we be alone on this, or are other cities already doing this? And, you know, if you guys really want to raise the rates, I think you should just skip a couple steps ahead, drive the routes, don't bother picking anybody up, you know? And if you see a poor person on the side of the road, just gun the engine, run them right over, you know, pick them up upside down, shake all the change out of their pockets, and if it's Route 1, you might as well take them to the hospital afterwards. Thanks.
To my knowledge, no one uses Measure A for backfill currently. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. We'll close oral communication, and we'll come back to the council discussion. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. So I just want to confirm with staff, if we eliminate Route 5, and we use Measure A backfill, we will be able, most likely, meet the 15% fare-box ratio?
Yes.
So that is the motion that I'd like to make this evening. We do not increase the rates, we use Measure A backfill, and we also eliminate Route 5, understanding that, I know you guys have been working very diligently, and it's 15% is absolutely obnoxious, but we still have a ways to go, and that's your number, that 7% ridership increase, that 13, approximately 13,000 riders, that is our goal. I don't know if that needs to be plastered in offices, how that needs to work, but if it's a thermometer that's zero people, 13,000 people, you know, and we have to count every month to see if we're getting there, make that your focus. I know you have so much other things to do, but in regards to the fare-box ratio, make that your focus, and really strive for that goal. But for now, I would use these two decisions to meet the fare-box ratio at this time. Thank you.
And a second.
I would second the motion if it has a time, a deadline to it. Right now, it's open, we'll do this for how long, and where's the metric to say, is it succeeding or not succeeding?
There was a six-month return, is that right? There was a report to return in six months, and I would like that to your car, please. Thank you.
And that's, you amended your motion?
I think it's officially amended, if need be.
And a second.
Second.
Councilmember Lingle.
I have a question for Mr. McEwen. The Measure A money we're going to be using, what projects is this going to affect?
It would come out of, we have some Measure A reserves that we could use, so it wouldn't immediately impact. It is setting a policy for, you know, precedent for the future, but it's low enough that we could take it out of Measure A reserves. And I just wanted to also point out that our recommendation was to implement the Route 5 change in January 1st. I want to make sure that's, yes, or if that's a part of your motion or not, I just want to clarify that.
And then, again, what's the amount of Measure A funds we're going to be using right now?
About 15,000, roughly.
Okay. And that's keeping the fares the same right now?
That'd be keeping the fares the same and eliminating Route 5 as described in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, would there be an advantage to eliminating Route 5 any sooner?
There would. There are requirements in the TDA Act about how fast you can do that, and we think January 1st probably is a reasonable time to do it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Councilmember Martin.
I guess I have a question based on the public comment. In your mind, why is it that the city of Galida and the city of Santa Barbara can afford to have a ride that goes in the freeway? I've seen that bus packed with people standing on the freeway, and it cost $1.75. What is it that makes that work? And what we're doing here doesn't make it work. It's just a question.
Referring to Santa Barbara?
Santa Barbara, yeah.
Probably the, well, Santa Barbara and Santa Maria are probably both roughly the same type of thing. They have a larger population in a smaller, well, more dense population per square mile, so you have more riders able to get on the bus and go to various places. We don't have the density that those cities do. That would be my...
There is a higher volume per mile. Is that what you're telling us? There is a higher volume of ridership per mile?
The population is denser, so you have more people that you would utilize the bus in a smaller area.
But that's potential volume, that's not the actual volume of people getting on the bus. So I'm just curious whether it's strictly a volume issue, or is it a density issue, what you're saying? I don't know.
I would have to ask MTD if they have information.
You know, it might be worthwhile, because, I mean, what we're trying to do in your marketing strategy to increase the volume of ridership, it's, might be worthwhile to look and see how they have been able to increase the volume. Are they servicing students? My suspicion is, yes, they are, perhaps college students, whatever. Okay, the point is, is that there has to be a strategy in how to increase the volume, because we have six months. In six months, we want to get a report that says we have increased the volume by 15% or 7%, whatever. There's got to be a strategy on how to do it. My advice would be, look closely at what other cities are doing that have the successful volume and targeted it. Thank you.
I think one thing, sitting on the SB CAG board and talking about these things, and the reason that there's a consideration for a rural transit agency, which is what we are, to get an exception and be at 15% fare-box versus the minimum requirement, which is 20, and typically, these larger systems run above that, and that's because of the population density and the usage is a result of that. So one kind of drives the other.
So, Mr. Mayor, you being in SB CAG, would you please lobby to try to get an exception for the rural? Go for it.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a really good possibility, and basically, what it boiled down to was, we had to prove effort. And if we, and Kevin, you can correct me if I'm off-track at all, but we had to, we had to take reasonable steps, not every step, not arduous steps, but reasonable steps to reach the minimum of 15. You can't be under 15, even as a rural transit agency, but you can get that exception to not be at 20.
And I would argue that marketing to increase volume is an effort.
Yeah, absolutely.
To be cited.
Absolutely. Okay, any more questions? All right. Any other discussions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I want to just put an anecdote into the discussion. Councilmember Martin asked about the volume in Santa Barbara on MTD. Having gone to UCSB when they implemented it, UCSB charges on their reg fees for students to be able to use MTD just by showing their reg card, and that fee goes from UCSB to MTD. When I was there, the buses to and from UCSB were standing-room-only all the time because the students could get on for free. But, the students got on for free, but from payments from their quarterly fees. I think that has a lot to do with the volume, because I would ride the bus from Isla Vista to Santa Barbara for work, and it was packed because of those students. Granted, that was many years ago, but it's still in operation.
Well, you know, you might talk to Hancock, maybe you can make a deal with them, they can, they can collect money for us. Okay, any other discussion? Okay. Yeah. And I think the flyers to the elementary schools would be certainly a good one, too. Any other discussion? Okay. Can we vote, please? Okay, can we vote, please? Okay, moving on to item number five in new business, the amendment of the Lompoc Municipal Code, Chapter 15, dot 48, the flood plane management to incorporate requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable council members. I'm here to present the amendment for Municipal Code, Chapter 15, 48, for the flood plane management. This is a requirement for the city to maintain the coverage under the National Flood Insurance Program. Just a little background, the FEMA puts out what are called FIRM maps, which are the flood insurance rate maps for communities. And the last time the city of Lompoc map was issued was September 30th, 2006, or 5, excuse me. And the city recently received a letter from FEMA indicating that they're going to implement the new maps on December 4th, 2012 of this year. And in order for the city to maintain eligibility under the NFIP, National Flood Insurance Program, we have to meet minimum standards, and one of those is to have certain language in our flood plane management ordinance. So, what you have before you in the document here are some minor, what we consider minor text changes to the existing ordinance. They have been run through FEMA Region 9 with staff to make these changes and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Pretty exciting stuff. I think, so we could summarize by saying FEMA says that these are the changes we need to make and if we make these changes, people can continue to get flood insurance and if we don't, they can't.
Well, they could get flood insurance, but it would cost them two to three times more.
Yeah, so functionally, no. Okay, so let's, let's take a break here and we'll go for public comment. Anyone out here want to talk to us about flood insurance? Going once, going twice, there you go.
My name is Yedidya DeVries. I have a question, not directly related to the textual amendments before you, but more to the new maps that are triggering the need for these new amendments. I was just wondering, I was looking at the new maps that are, will be going to effect on December 4th, 2012, and I was wondering if the council or perhaps staff could speak to how the fact that these new maps are going to affect, will affect the prospects of the drag strip getting built, since the location of the drag strip is both in the old maps and in the new maps and what is designated as a floodway. So, I was just curious if someone could speak, since I'm sure the public is curious.
I can speak to that because we chatted with an individual that works with the city with regard to the flood plain and what we learned from that was that anything under five feet in height in the floodway isn't an issue as long as it runs parallel with the direction of the water and since the only thing on the drag strip are K rails, which are less than five feet in height and run east to west, which is the direction of the water, it's not an issue, which we were, I was very relieved to hear him say that because that had been a concern for a long time, but we were able to get that clarification. And kind of how the conversation got started, if you've ever been to Terravant over in Buellton, the wine tasting facility, their parking lot is actually in the floodway and they have a trash enclosure out there, which is obviously five feet high, but aligned with the direction of the water, and that's kind of how the conversation began, so no bad news there. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close oral communicate, your public comment, and we will come back to the council. Are there any questions at this time and if not, I would accept a motion.
I would like to...
Councilmember Martner, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light.
Regarding the answer that the mayor says, does the staff have the same information?
Kevin McKeon, Public Works Director. So, you are allowed to build in the floodway as long as you have an engineer sign a statement saying you're not going to change the flood elevation. And in general, he was, that engineer was relating his experience on when he's been able to write those letters and when he hasn't. So, yes, that's, that the engineer did share that that was his experience in the past, that he's been able to make the calculations work for these low height structures that are not impeding the flow.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, and Councilmember Lingle. Okay, anyone else with a question? Okay, with a motion, please. A move that we accept staff recommendations. And a second, please. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. And now, council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Councilmember Martner.
I'll be making two agenda item requests, actually, there, I like to call them re-agendize. I will start by giving you a little history of the first agenda item that I would like to re-agendize. On December 6, 2011, this council voted to have the staff returned to the council at a future date with a draft of a revised city administrator job description. That agenda item was passed 5-0 and we still have not received that agenda item. It was back in December 6, 2011. So, I would like to, since I made the motion and it was seconded by Councilmember Lingle, I would like to have the opportunity to participate in this agenda item and since I'll be leaving the council sometime in December, I would like to have it seen, come up to the agenda before then, if possible. I'm willing to wait one more month because I've been waiting since December 6, 2011. Do we need to re-agendize it or do I just make the request to the city, to the city administrator? Could you put it in the agenda sooner?
I think the question would be each council member has received a large notebook on the subject. Is everyone prepared to discuss this? Councilmember Lingle? Councilmember Costa? Okay. City administrator, could you put that on the agenda, please?
Thank you. My second agenda item request, it's more or less on the same tone. Back in December, actually, no, I will carry more and I'll go right down to the bottom and, let's see, the date is March 6, 2012. The council requested staff to contact the county to confirm if a forensic audit had been approved by the Board of Supervisors and to provide an estimate of the cost if the city were to partner with the county in performing a forensic audit of LHCDC's financial records and to report back to the council at the March 13, 2012 adjourned council meeting. On May 15th, we did get a report from City Attorney Joseph Penoni that stated that the county of Santa Barbara had requested the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation to produce copies of its files and records for the county to review. The city does not have access to those files and/or record. Councilmember Martner motioned for council to have a discussion at a later date regarding performing a forensic audit of LHCDC's financial records or joining with the county of Santa Barbara in their forensic audit and directing staff to provide a report outlining the cost of a forensic audit performed independently or joining efforts with the county. The motion was seconded by Councilmember Lingle and carried by Mayor John Lynn. That was back in May 15, 2012. I would like to, if I may, re-agendize to discuss a potential forensic audit, discussion with numbers before I leave my term in December, since I made this motion back in May 15th and it was approved and we are here in October and we still have not had it on the agenda.
Seems to me there was one more report from the city attorney with regard to that, that the county was not interested in doing a forensic audit, however, they seem to be more interested now.
I'm not aware of that report. I don't know if it is in the public record either, but my point is, is that I would like to make it an agenda item to do a discussion regarding a forensic audit for LHCDC. That agenda item was approved back in May of this year and again, I would like to have this council prioritize such as that it comes up before my term is over.
I'm curious why you're asking for that since the county's already doing it. That's, I guess that's my question.
The forensic audit is regarding city monies, the loans that the city has given to LHCDC. The forensic audit that is being conducted by the county, once again, only pertains to county funds, not city funds. So, the conversations and the discussions had been all along, could we join the county in a potential forensic audit that would expand the audit to city funds? That question was never answered. There was, however, a motion on the floor and the public record states that we were going to have an agenda item that would discuss those items. I would like to have that agenda item unless the council decides to not have it.
Okay, and I, and I could be mistaken. My recollection was that after the county wasn't interested in participating with us on some percentage basis of a forensic audit, then we went through the process of deciding to hire the consultant to review all the 8,000-ish pages of city records and, and let me finish. I'm not saying I'm right, I'm just saying this is how my memory goes and that as part of that process, when we got that document, which has obviously been long delayed by the consultant, we would also formulate a policy going forward on the use of housing funds. That's kind of how it's been running in my mind and it may be different in yours, so that's okay, too.
It is not a question whether it's running on my mind or not. The public record shows that the council discussed the hiring of a consultant or actually directed the staff back in December 6, 2011. Then, there were meetings, in fact, the city administrator back then says that the staff was recommending that we hire a consultant and that that consultant should have a report within 30 days. It's also in the public record. That was going on at the end of 2012, beginning of, the end of 2011, beginning of 2012. The actual agenda item request that I am mentioning is in May of 2012, after all of those decisions were done. So, there was an agenda item that was approved after the consultant was hired, after there were delays with the consultant. The public record shows, that's the chronology.
Okay, I have the chronology backwards. What was our estimated reception date from our friends, the rather far behind consultants?
They have advised us that they would have a draft report to us the week of October 8th.
Okay, and the meeting immediately following October 8th would be October...
16th or November 6th.
I understand Councilmember Martner's desire to get this done. Councilmember Martner is November 6th, okay? I think the other one might, might be a little tough to make.
November 6th sounds fine.
Okay, so let's, let's combine the two, if that's good with everybody. We'll receive the consultant's report and it'll be so agendized that a wider discussion can occur with regard to either a forensic audit or any of those other... Joe, could you word it in such a wide way that we could have a discussion with regard to an audit or to the findings from the report?
Mr. Mayor, with due respect, I think it'd be better to have something specific than general so that isn't, we aren't sure, we're sure there isn't a miscommunication. So, what I understand is that there's a desire for the council to have information from staff on what it would cost to do a forensic audit of the LHCDC's financial records.
And...
As well as the, the...
The other records, yes.
Urban futures report.
Yes, and word it in a broad enough way so that we wouldn't be restricted in our discussion. You know...
Because you think you want something other than a forensic audit?
No, no, I think just so we could talk about, the word forensic audit might be narrow, audit, forensic audit, you know, something, talking about auditing and review, that direction. Councilmember Starbuck.
I was going to announce tonight that I am not going to be here on November 6th. I'm actually going to be out of state and looking at future agendas, there was things with the old theater and some minor business, which I would be recusing and all that, but I would really like to be part of this conversation if we might want to consider having a special meeting in November.
Now, that does go along the line of another discussion that we had, so maybe the second, how does the second Tuesday in November look for everybody? I'm going for it right now.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I would prefer that it's done before the election.
Okay, well, Councilmember Starbuck, I think we need to defer to Councilmember Martner, so, yep, okay, so we're back on for that date, fine. The first meeting in November.
Well, actually, no, but I disagree. I think I would like to honor Councilmember Starbuck. Let's put it at the end of October. Or we have a special meeting, yeah, let's have it on Halloween.
That was Councilmember Costa!
I'm leaving at midnight. Yeah, I don't think we're going to have it on Halloween.
I would say we either have it on the council, on the council meeting, the last council meeting in October, or we call a special meeting at the end of October, in the last week of October, so Councilmember Starbuck can be present.
Actually, as it turns out, we're lucky, Tuesday, the 30th is not Halloween, it is Wednesday, the 31st, so we would not, we would not be the Grifts that stole Halloween.
We could still wear costumes.
Maybe not.
As a point of clarification, you wanted information on what it would cost to do a joint audit with the county? Or to, to work with the county and extend that audit to include our data?
That and what it would cost to do a forensic audit.
Probably come at it from both directions. Okay, so, Tuesday, October 30th, how's that look for everybody?
Tuesday, October...
30th, the day before Halloween. Councilmember Lingle, you checking your book? Since you had a schedule for every Tuesday, I have every Tuesday marked as city council meeting, so it's okay with me. Okay. Okeydoke, so we got that one handled. Anything else, Councilmember Martner?
I'm done with the agenda items request.
Do you have anything, any reports you need to make?
Mr. Mayor, are you going to report on the UCSB meeting or...
Why don't you go ahead?
There was a meeting with the Vice Chancellor and other two individuals at UCSB where Mayor Lynn, myself, and Rick Rantz, who is the dean of the extended campus at Allen Hancock College, and basically, we discussed and talked to UCSB if they would look into, if their plans failed regarding their proposed expansion in Galida, if they would look at Lompoc for a potential satellite campus. And the presentation was very well received. We made Lompoc look as attractive as possible without going, without being, you know, non-factual, so we were quite honest about what we could offer and what the advantages are. so we were quite honest about what we could offer and what the advantages are. They basically told us, well, wait until after November 6, because their expansion is riding on a tax increase that is in the ballot. So we have to talk to them after November 6. That's basically the bottom line. If the measure doesn't pass, they will not probably have the monies for their projected growth and the project that they would like to see. So at this point in time, I don't think we can say much about that, and just we're in a wait-and-see mode at this time.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. As I announced at the last meeting, I attended, before I left, I attended an NCPA conference in Monterey with Councilmember Lingle and Staff Member Larry Bean, and it was my first endeavor as an alternate for NCPA, and I learned a lot. Really amazing to talk to so many people who are experiencing similar situations that we're experiencing in regards to what we have to do with AB-32, and it's really neat because we get to see what's at the forefront of technology, and really, what is viable. And so, for example, something that they've been talking about is energy storage, you know, really being, and energy transmission being two of the largest hurdles we have to get over in implementing AB-32 with renewable energies. And so we learned a lot, you know, had some good communication, and I'm looking forward to more events of that nature, and that was at City Cost. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Ironically, I had a agenda item request also. This goes on to a 20-december, and what I'm curious about, we were doing a follow-on report in February about our code enforcement policy. We were going to talk about going proactive instead of complaint, the incorporation of respect in the Curb program, the administrative fee that we were going to set up and establish. And I think that we've gone as far as the nuisance abatement, and I think that being that this is a number three council priority, that we should go ahead and maybe get back on this.
Hopefully, you don't want it before-
The 2nd?
November 6.
No, not now, but I'm just saying that, you know, this was a while back, and I mean, it just kind of has fallen off of my radar here.
Okay, I think, remembering, we moved forward, and we took the Curb program and the other program from the past, and we came to an agreement that we would begin Section 1700 nuisance enforcement on a proactive basis, and we wordsmithed the letter that has my artificial signature on it, and that process is ongoing, and in my mind, we kind of had closed that, and we were waiting to see some results. Are you indicating that you want to go in a different direction?
Well, I mean, if we sent-
You want to go proactive on everything?
I guess the question is, have we sent a letter?
Yes, we've sent a number of letters, because I've gotten a number of phone calls.
We have not got the follow-on here, and that's what I think I would like to have.
Okay, so what you're looking for is a result of work that's going?
Where are we with our code enforcement?
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, I mean, this was kind of one of my things, and it's like lost here.
So City Administrator, could you provide that information from Steve, please? Because I know a number of those letters have gone out.
Mayor and council, would you like a status report per agenda, or a status report memo in your boxes?
Why don't you put it in our boxes and then recap it for the public at the future meeting, so the public is well-advised on it, too?
Okay.
Because there's a lot of community interest. Is that okay, Councilmember Starbuck?
I'm fine with that, as long as we just do an update on it.
Okay. And I'll come back to you, let me, or is that a subject on? Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Martner.
In the last meeting during CAPERS, staff told us that we're in a complaint-driven code enforcement scenario, but we've been told that we are proactive, so there is clearly some major confusion. And I think that is what needs to be clarified, because we just got a report that says that we're complaint-driven, don't we?
It's divided in two sections. The council voted to be proactive in Section 1700, which were the nuisance items. We put that in the utility bills, and it went to everybody. And then after that, we'd been sending out that letter that we all agreed to, that has my electronic signature on it, and then we agreed that the balance of our code enforcement was complaint-generated, so we basically divided the program in half at that point. And the nuisance things were like weeds, trash, abandoned vehicles, incomplete vehicles in the front yard, cars parked on the grass, all those sort of things.
So we're going to get an update of where we are?
Yeah.
In the form of our memo? And could we update the public in a public meeting, you know, briefly during your...
Yeah, that's what I asked her to do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Okay, the other thing was, is on the 4th of September, we talked about the CDBG consortium, and Ms. Galvin, there was a comment there that you had said that you were going to get with us on the 18th about a clause that would tell us how we would get out of that consortium. And, you know, I want to stay on that. I don't want this to come down to the last minute. If I'm flip-flopping around on this, I'd want to be able to think about it for long and hard. And the other thing I'd like to just kind of mention to the council members is, I go to a lot of commission meetings and talk to some of your commissioners and get some feedback, because after we get done with a workshop about the low-income housing and stuff, I think that it may behoove us as a council to have a workshop with the commissions. We have a lot of good people out there really wanting to do something, but they don't know how to talk to us. They talk to us individually. They're frustrated, some of them have no idea where to go, what they're doing, but later down the road, but talk to them between now and then. We'll have all new people after elections and stuff, so just think about it, please. And I will be absent on the meeting on November 6.
Thank you. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad we're going to be revisiting the code enforcement. I was at a forum today with the realtors, realtors put on a small forum, and that was a big issue with them. You know, their business is dependent on how our city looks and curb appeal, and, well, the realtors in general are not happy, so they'll be happy to know that we're bringing it back. See my reports. I also, along with Councilmember Costa, attended the NCAP, NCPA meeting on September 19th and 20th. There was some city expense on that for my mileage and hotel room. On the 27th, I attended a community advisory board meeting at Vandenberg Air Force Base. And on this past Monday, the 1st, I attended a oversight board meeting here in City Hall.
Looks like over the last two weeks, I had about 22 meetings with groups and individuals. I recapped earlier the one with the prison warden, and I think we look forward to having a closer relationship with him. I also, last week, spent quite a bit of time looking at options on the Lompoc Theater, and I wanted to update the council on those. There was a discussion about, two weeks ago, that got me going down the road of, there might be a possibility to buy the theater out, as it had no value from the state. And the, kind of the thing that got that started is, Galida went down that road with a park. And in the case of the park, they actually paid the RDA back for what was involved. And then I became aware of a building in Guadalupe that has no value, and there was a discussion there about having that building be sold for a dollar or some insignificant amount, or perhaps even 99 cents. And so, based on that knowledge, the city administrator and I had a conference call with Chandra Waller, the county CEO, and talked about those two situations and confirmed, you know, how those had gone forward. And then, prior to that, looking for a way to accelerate the theater, I had had a conversation with the administrator at the Department of Finance, who's handling unusual issues, and he had given me a little hope that there might be a way to go forward. After talking to Ms. Waller, the city administrator and I then spoke to the individual at the Department of Finance, and outlined the possibility of buying the theater for a dollar and, you know, making it as a purchase with the approval of the oversight board, and made a case for the fact that because of the condition of the building and the list of repairs, the building was basically valueless, and if the building were to be demolished, which would require an approval of the state, the cost of demolition, because of all the concrete in the building, exceeded the value of the land that you would generate if we all didn't get lynched by the community for demolishing it in the first place. And so, he was nice enough to go chat with their staff, attorneys about it, and basically came back with no but. On October 5, they will post the requirements for the property liquidation. Say it one more time that I... Property management plan. Yeah, it is written down in here, but it'd take me longer to find it. And with that, rather than having the very long timeframe, he said they would be willing, in the case of something like our theater and other properties where there's an urgent need, that they would be willing to accelerate the property management plan to clear it through the process in record time, if you will. And so, on October 5, when that information is posted, we'll get some information on that, and ask that the city administrator distribute it via email to everyone. And then we'll look at the fastest way to go forward from there. The other property that, the Galida Park kind of was the parallel to, is our downtown parking lots, in which $200,000 of RDA money were invested, and then the vast, vast majority, 95% of the money came from other sources. And there, the opportunity would be to buy that back out and acquire those back to the city. And it's interesting, because the city loaned the money to the RDA, then the RDA bought into the deal, but when the state passed their rule, the RDA couldn't pay us for the money that they still owe us. But if we go through all these steps and complete everything, the carrot at the end is that we'll get paid back. So if we give the state the money, they're going to give it back to us, which is fairly convoluted, but that's, we'll get half of it back anyway. And so, we'll have an update on those things, and, yeah. I thought for a moment, we, there was a light at the end of the tunnel, but it wasn't. There were the lights, the tunnel's a little longer, but it's a lot shorter than it was before. And I didn't do anything at city expense, just a reminder of the open house at the fire station on the 6th at 10:00 a.m. Hope to see everyone there. And with that, we will, Lompoc City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 16. Thank you.